City Council early work session. It is 6:00 PM on September the 10th, 2024. Get started with an update on an amendment to the interlocal agreement in the City of Louisville and Town of Flower Mounds for the joint fire training facility.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll do that. Can we get somebody to with a remote? So, I'll always give it for me. And I believe the question was asked at the council meeting that I missed. I sent a response to city council about the fire training facility. Of course, we had the original agreement and then we had a so the original interlocal agreement was approved October 12th of 2021. And of course, the share of this facility is based on a per capita basis. So our representative's share is only 7.8% of the cost. Louisville's is 51.6%, Flower Mounds 40.6%. The original estimate was $4.9 million and our share at that time was $386,591. Due to price increases and a lot of this was coming out of COVID, supply chain inflation. The alley was amended in September of last year, about a year ago, increasing the city's cost by $149,206.98. Now, during the pre-construction phase, they struck significant groundwater and groundwater intrusion was very evident. They did do a thorough search to make sure it wasn't a City of Louisville Water League or Upper Trinity Water League, but it was just groundwater. So they proposed a dewatering system to lower the groundwater levels. They removed the saturated soils and replaced it with suitable material and therefore that stabilized the ground for the foundation construction. The foundations are now complete and the building's going vertical and is getting very close to being completed.
The groundwater, was that just a low area that sets?
Groundwater in some places it carry and it carries and it settles there. It is a little bit lower there as you go down.
It's not from just runoff where it would just sit. Is it coming in from somewhere else? I see where it was coming in from. Is there a possibility of intrusion to the foundation that would cause further problems?
No, at this point, no. The way they did the deep water well system, there's no concern about future. That area does lie a little bit lower, this surrounding area. But that was staying the reason.
There's, it's not in floods, obviously.
No, it is not. So the cost for that was approximately $600,000 and that exceeded the contingency amount of $373,380. So to cover that additional amount, $395,000 is required. And this is a breakdown of the cost of each city. Louisville's is $203,820, Flower Mounds 16370 and again, ours is $30,810. So we did allocate these funds in the FY '23, '24 budget. The fire trading facility is expected to be completed in November with no further change orders. In fact, I just got a report this afternoon. Things are looking great. So any unused funds in that contingency will carry over to the operating cost. Right now, they're anticipating, once everything's done, it'll be about $107,000 in contingency that'll carry over to that. And that is all I have on that, unless there's any questions.
Sorry, just so my math is right. So that 176,000 that we're allocated equates to about $2 million in change orders above the original estimate. Is that right?
If you look at the original estimate.
I'm sorry, 1.9 million.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right?
Yeah, that is.
Any other questions? This is on consent items on the consent agenda tonight.
1.9, part of that was the coverage for the water issue, right? How much of the 1.9 is the cost increase?
Now, the original, let's see if I can. Can I get back to the previous?
The 360,000, is that what the, that was just the contingency initial?
That was to re-put the contingency, plus have a little bit of extra in there in case there was something else. So yeah, the original estimate was 4.9 and then there were price increases. And so our share of that increase was 149,000. So, in light of that, I don't have that full amount. I just did the math, yeah.
And 600 was due to the water, so 1.3 price increase is if someone would have drilled some holes, did a burp test. The geotech would have been nice.
Okay. All right. Somebody else? Okay, well then we're going to do clarification of consent or action items. Does anybody have any questions, clarification items on this agenda? During none, we are going to four interviews of the head of flight, we're going to do them tonight before the meeting starts. And then the remainder will be the remainder of those interviews will be on the 17th. Remember Robert, where you said?
I'll do anything for the city, but I won't do that.
Last meeting, there was nobody. Okay.
Mayor, you do have the option to go ahead and take care of your late session and update, report updates now for the next few minutes. We've got to post it that way if you want to go ahead and do that now.
You don't want to do late now? You might have anything?
I was glad you did. No, nothing really. Village report will give several updates, but nothing else for report.
I have a future agenda item. I didn't know, but I might pull up mine. It's in my car.
It's in what?
It's in my car. Okay.
We'll give it off, give it off.
Yeah, it's in my other. I'm glad I remembered, it's needed.
Nobody remember? Anybody else have any future agenda items? Current projects?
Oh wait, found it.
Oh, everybody stop looking, you found it.
Well, you and me. And I'll email it to you, Angie.
Thank you.
All right. So, I would like a future agenda item. The police substation hosting agreement and termination of prior agreement for the MP shops of Highland Village, signed and agreed to by the city on December 7, 2018. For the terms of the agreement, the agreement terminates December 31st, 2024. I'd like to request a future agenda item tied prior to the expiration of this agreement for a status update on any future agreements being negotiated with the shops of Highland Village that contractually obligates the city to provide full police coverage to a private property owner. Items to be discussed should include the proposal, the proposed financial terms, proposed number of average hours per day the City of Highland Village has committed to, to provide police personnel, the proposed role of the police auxiliary will fulfill in any agreements, and a review of the execution of the current agreement that shows the number of hours the city has provided police coverage, including the number of police personnel and police auxiliary members per month for the past three years.
You're going to email that over first?
Sure, I got it, yeah.
I'll email it over.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Well, if not, then we are adjourned, 16.
Good evening. Welcome. I don't think it, I think it is. Can you hear me? Now you can.
Too far away.
Oh, hang on. Put it up there. It's kind of, now you can hear. Okay. Now, I think it's in the right place. Hold on one second. Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is September the 10th, 2024. It is 7:34 PM. Call a meeting to order. Let the record show all council members are present. And tonight, we're going to have prayer and pledges led by Councilman Nelson.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, bless us this evening as we gather for this meeting. Give us the wisdom, guidance, and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. I pray that each of us uphold what is ethical, moral, and wise, and that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our cities, we always put the people's interests above our own. We ask, Father, that you continue to bless, watch over, and protect the residents of Highland Village, our emergency services, our city staff, and our military personnel serving throughout the world. Finally, we pray that you protect our children and keep them safe as they continue to navigate this school year. In all these things, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to have mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Council, does anyone, does anyone have anything? Nothing?
Don't you want to tell us about the pizza?
Oh, I'm so glad you brought that up. So, we did do the mayoral pizza challenge at Motor City Pizza, and there were eight mayors. I did not win the judges pick. I did win the public pick, which I would much rather be that, that one than judges, because those judges just like movie critics. When you go to a movie and you think you saw the best movie ever, and they give it four tomatoes, that's kind of how I felt about it, the pizza judges. So, I think I had the best. I do want to give credit to Phil Maloney, who gave me the recipe. It was the people's choice, so, anyway. And I raised money for Journey to Dream, so all the funds that were raised went to Journey to Dream. So, anyway, it was fun. Thank you for bringing that up, Rhonda. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Well then, we are going to move on. I have, actually, I have a proclamation. T-Ron, you want to meet me at the front?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's perfect, because I need a place to put this microphone, because I didn't wear anything with a pocket, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry about that. So, we'll just do it like that, and you stand right here?
I'll stand right here.
All right. I'm going to give you, like always.
Yes, ma'am.
The official one, and I'm going to read the one with the big words.
Yes, ma'am.
All right?
All right.
So, "Whereas school bullying, harassment, and intimidation greatly reduces students' abilities to both achieve and surpass academic standards in public schools in the city of Highland Village, and whereas bullying can directly affect a student's health and well-being and thus contribute to excessive absences from school, physical sickness, mental and emotional anguish, and long-term social and mental consequences; and whereas individuals that engage in bullying may also struggle throughout their lifetime because they have not learned appropriate social behavior."
Yes, ma'am.
And where it is long time, and where, whereas it is long past time for not only society, but also for each community to acknowledge that bullying is not a rite of passage to be simply ignored or, and tolerated. Whereas, the Stop Bullying Our Purpose Program encourages schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children's and, children and adolescents. Now, therefore, I, Charlotte Wilcox, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Say No to Bullying Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of you. Very thank you. I'm going to step over and let you, if you want to say a few things, that would be great.
Awesome. All right. To the city of Highland Village, I am forever grateful for your support, and to the citizens, and, and when I say that, I mean it in all sincerity. This program started based on a whim. Some call it a whim, but when you have a daughter in second grade, I call it a gym. And so, my gym told me, she says, Dad, I need you to come to school and speak against bullying, and as a father, you think, are you being bullied? And she says, no, we need to be proactive instead of reactive. And she's in, she was in second grade at that time. And so, at that time, I learned you don't argue with women, because you're going to lose. And then, I knew she was going to tell her mom, and so therefore, I reached out to the counselor, reached out to the WWE, and, and this here transcends 13 years later to, we have spoken to over 3.5 million people about bullying. We have a program that's in, in Australia and New Zealand and across this great country we call America. And it's all because a community like yours believes in a program like what we have. And I just, I can't thank you all enough, you know, Mayor Wilcox, you know, you and our, you and our great friends, we've been friends for years, and you've supported me, and, you know, Councilman Nelson's always been there for me, but most importantly, the citizens, yes, but I just thank God every day that I have a community that says, you know what? We're going to do this thing as one. And so, I truly appreciate you all, and I want to say thank you all for letting me out of my honeydew list, because that, she had a honeydew list at 7:15, but I told her I had, I had a meeting at Highland Village, so here I am. I know, right? Likely story. But, but as I go, I just want to say thank you all, and just know from the bottom of my heart, depths of my soul, that I have each of you all on a prayer list, on a daily, you know, and I thank you for, you know, my incredible policeman in the fire department here in Highland Village, but most importantly, I thank you all for what y'all do for standing by me, because in life, it does take two to make a difference, and with you all and me, we're making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, T-Ron, for coming out tonight. And I get home, get that honeydew list done. All right. Okay, so we are, we're going to go to city manager and staff reports, and I think we have a video tonight.
Mark your calendars for the annual Concert in the Park series at Doubletree Ranch Park. The series kicks off on Friday, October 5th with Taylor Swift tribute band Lover. Then on Friday, October 12th, we're throwing it back to the 80s with cover band 80's Gadgets. Finally, it all wraps up on Friday, October 19th at the TX Fallen PD Tribute Event with Chaz Marie's fusion of country, blues, and rock and roll. Concerts will begin at 7:00 PM at Doubletree Ranch Park. Overflow parking will be available with a free shuttle service at Coppers Branch Park. Our fall paper shredding event is on September 21st. Bring all your documents out to Pilot Knoll Park from 2:00 PM until 5:00 PM. This event is for Highland Village residents only. Just be sure to bring your ID. Thanks for joining us on this Village Report.
Perfect. All right, so we're going to move on to visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments on anything other, not on an agenda item? No? Okay. And we're going to go to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda item. Number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on August 27th, 2024. Number 12, consider resolution 2024-3134 authorizing the Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement with the city of Louisville in town of Flower Mound regarding the construction of a joint fire training facility. Council, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. And do I have a second? Oh, and Ms. Nelson's second? All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, same sign. Carrie, 7-0. Sean? Okay. Action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so we're going to go to number 14. Item is continued from August 13th, 2024. Meeting, conduct a public, public hearing, consider ordinance 2024-1313 amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance, amending the regulations relating to the use and development of 3.96 acre tract of land located in the F. Hyatt survey, abstract number 559, commonly known as 102 Barnett Boulevard, from SF40 single-family residents to plan development to
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to have mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Council, does anyone, does anyone have anything? Nothing?
Don't you want to tell us about the pizza?
Oh, I'm so glad you brought that up. So, we did do the mayoral pizza challenge at Motor City Pizza, and there were eight mayors. I did not win the judges' pick. I did win the public pick, which I would much rather be that, that one than judges, because those judges, just like movie critics, when you go to a movie and you think you saw the best movie ever, and they give it four tomatoes, that's kind of how I felt about it, the pizza judges. So, I think I had the best. I do want to give credit to Phil Maloney, who gave me the recipe. It was the people's choice, so, anyway. And I raised money for Journey to Dream, so all the funds that were raised went to Journey to Dream. So, anyway, it was fun. Thank you for bringing that up, Rhonda. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Well, then, we are going to move on. I have, actually, I have a proclamation. T-Ron, you want to meet me at the front?
Yes, ma'am.
That's perfect, because I need a place to put this microphone, because I didn't wear anything with a pocket, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry about that. So, we'll just do it like that, and you stand right here?
I'll stand right here.
All right, I'm going to give you, like always.
Yes, ma'am.
The official one, and I'm going to read the one with the big words.
Yes, ma'am.
All right?
All right.
So, whereas school bullying, harassment, and intimidation greatly reduce a student's abilities to both achieve and surpass academic standards in public schools in the city of Highland Village, and whereas bullying can directly affect a student's health and well-being, and thus contribute to excessive absences from school, physical sickness, mental and emotional anguish, and long-term social and mental consequences; and whereas individuals that engage in bullying may also struggle throughout their lifetime because they have not learned appropriate social behavior.
Yes, ma'am.
And where it is long time, and whereas it is long past time for not only society, but also for each community to acknowledge that bullying is not a rite of passage to be simply ignored or, and tolerated. Whereas, the Stop Bullying Our Purpose Program encourages schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children's, and children and adolescents. Now, therefore, I, Charlotte Wilcox, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Say No to Bullying Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of you. I'm going to step over and let you, if you want to say a few things, that would be great.
Awesome. All right. To the City of Highland Village, I am forever grateful for your support, and to the citizens, and, and when I say that, I mean it in all sincerity. This program started based on a whim. Some call it a whim, but when you have a daughter in second grade, I call it a gym. And so, my gym told me, she says, Dad, I need you to come to school and speak against bullying, and as a father, you think, are you being bullied? And she says, no, we need to be proactive instead of reactive. And she's in, she was in second grade at that time. And so, at that time, I learned you don't argue with women, because you're going to lose. And then, I knew she was going to tell her mom, and so, therefore, I reached out to the counselor, reached out to the WWE, and, and this here transcends 13 years later to, we have spoken to over 3.5 million people about bullying. We have a program that's in, in Australia and New Zealand and across this great country we call America. And it's all because a community like yours believes in a program like what we have. And I just, I can't thank you all enough, you know, Mayor Wilcox, you know, you and I are, you and I are great friends, we've been friends for years, and you've supported me, and, you know, Councilman Nelson's always been there for me, but most importantly, the citizens, yes, but I just thank God every day that I have a community that says, you know what, we're going to do this thing as one. And so, I truly appreciate you all, and I want to say thank you all for letting me out of my honeydew list, because that, she had a honeydew list at 7:15, but I told her I had, I had a meeting at Highland Village, so here I am. I know, right? Likely story. But, as I go, I just want to say thank you all, and just know from the bottom of my heart, depths of my soul, that I have each of you all on a prayer list, on a daily, you know, and I thank you for, you know, my incredible policeman in the fire department here in Highland Village, but most importantly, I thank you all for what y'all do for standing by me, because in life, it does take two to make a difference, and with you all and me, we're making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, T-Ron, for coming out tonight. When I get home, get that honeydew list done. All right. Okay, so we are, we're going to go to city manager and staff reports, and I think we have a video tonight.
Mark your calendars for the annual Concert in the Park series at Doubletree Ranch Park. The series kicks off on Friday, October 5th, with Taylor Swift tribute band Lover. Then, on Friday, October 12th, we're throwing it back to the 80s with cover band 80's Gadgets. Finally, it all wraps up on Friday, October 19th, at the TX Fall and PD Tribute Event with Chaz Marie's Fusion of Country, Blues, and Rock and Roll. Concerts will begin at 7:00 PM at Doubletree Ranch Park. Overflow parking will be available with a free shuttle service at Copper's Branch Park. Our fall paper shredding event is on September 21st. Bring all your documents out to Pilot Knoll Park from 2:00 PM until 5:00 PM. This event is for Highland Village residents only. Just be sure to bring your ID. Thanks for joining us on this Village Report.
Perfect. All right, so we're going to move on to visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments on anything other, not on an agenda item? No? Okay. And we're going to go to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda item. Number 11, consider approval minutes of the regular city council meeting held on August 27th, 2024. Number 12, consider resolution 2024-3134, authorizing the Second Amendment to the inter-local agreement with the City of Louisville and Town of Flower Mound regarding the construction of a joint fire training facility. Council, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Okay, thank you. And do I have a second? Oh, and Mr. Nelson, a second? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. Sean. Okay. Action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so we're going to go to number 14. Item is continued from August 13th, 2024 meeting. Conduct a public, public hearing, consider ordinance 2024-1313, amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance, amending the regulations relating to the use and development of 3.96 acre tract of land located in the F. Hyatt survey, abstract number 559, commonly known as 102 Barnett Boulevard, from SF40 single-family residents to plan development district for patio home use. And this is a first of two reads. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city is receiving an application from Mr. Dusty Broadway, DJB Development, requesting to change the current zoning on the mentioned acre tract located at 12 Barnett Boulevard, which presently zoned as SF40. By enacting a PD district for patio homes consisting of 25 lots, the development would be called Magnolia Village. This item was brought to council on August 13th, and at the request of the developer, he asked for a continuation. So, this is our, we're bringing it back now as, as the continuation. This development falls under the Highland Village zoning ordinance section 28.2.2, with one exception, requested a 30-foot right-of-way instead of a 50-foot right-of-way. This item has been, little bit of history on the item. In August 16th, 2022, P&amp;Z recommended denial of an application for this development, which was at that time a 60-lot townhome development that never came to council. March 28th, 2023, an application came forward for 39 townhomes that was considered by council after receiving a recommendation for approval by P&amp;Z. However, there was enough protests at that time to require a supermajority vote, and it did not have the supermajority vote from council. Our progress to date, this item was worked in the July 16th, 2024 P&amp;Z meeting with the commission recommendation to send the ordinance forward to city council with a four-to-one vote. However, subsequent to that planning and zoning meeting, the developer has agreed to installing a eight-foot board-on-board wooden barrier fence along the western property line. In the process of revising the ordinance to that, the city attorney noticed a potential conflict with building height along the western lot line, or the western lots. So, you have two ordinances in front of you tonight. One is the ordinance that planning and zoning voted four-to-one move forward, which does not contain the eight-foot western fence or the city attorney's revision for structure height. The other ordinance does contain the eight-foot fence and the city attorney's revision for the structure heights. As of September 6th, staff has received two emails and six letters, additional opposing, which has been provided to council. Yesterday, Monday, the 10th, the city manager sent out an email to council regarding opposition for this site, and with, with the new public hearing going out, all property owners within 200 feet were, were identified and resent the, the notification. So, with that, I believe in the email that the city manager sent, two of those petitioners that were opposing in the August meeting retracted, retracted their opposition in the new public hearing, making the opposition fall below 20%, which does not, so this does not require a supermajority vote tonight. This item does require a public hearing. I do have the developer here. They are prepared to provide a presentation. I would recommend the developer providing his presentation prior to public hearing opening.
So, I just have a quick question real fast, and then I believe, John, you turned on my light.
No, go ahead first.
So, but you said we have two ordinances before us tonight, or the, the number, one is the one that was P&amp;Z, and it was, is number, ordinance 2024-20, oh, 1313? Is that with the, the changes of?
Mayor, I believe both, both versions of the ordinance have the same number.
Oh, okay.
If you look in your packet, above the caption, though, there is, as far as which ordinance you're talking about, there is, in, in red in your packet, it explains which ordinance is which. So, the second ordinance in your packet is the one that contains the changes that the developer requested, plus, you know, plus the change I requested. And just a little bit further explained on, on the one that I made, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a lot of representations by the developer, of course, that the homes constructed along the western lots that backed up to the existing single-family residential area would only be one-story. While that's, showed that on the site plan that way, it didn't expressly state that in the body of the ordinance itself, creating a potential conflict between the, the text of the ordinance and the, and I've actually got, and I've actually got it turned on tonight. The, you know, between the text of the ordinance and the site plan, so I wanted to resolve that conflict, and that's why I added language to expressly state that the, the height of the western, the buildings on the western lot.
Okay.
Would be only one-story.
Okay, I misunderstood, I'm sorry. And then, I think.
No, that, that answered it.
Oh.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll have.
So, tonight, we have our options and results anticipated from council is number one, approve as submitted. Number two, approve with modifications, or number three, deny the request. Council may also postpone any action in order to receive any additional information which is requested as presented. I'm going to turn it over at this time to the developer's consultant to provide a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Well, it's good to be back in front of you. Nikki Moore with A&amp;Moore Consulting is hired by Mr. Broadway to facilitate this zoning change and provide more planning expertise on the site. This project's been a while, around a while. I've gotten to stand in front of you a couple of times now. It's gone through several iterations, but I have to say that I think it came out for the better. I think it's been a really great case study in terms of neighborhood engagement and collaboration amongst all the stakeholders, and so, I'm excited to present what we have before you this evening. Okay, so, you know, when we first start a project, I think we all can agree that every single piece of property that's developed has its own complications, right? There's no one way to develop every single piece of property. They come in all shapes and sizes, whether they have a lot of trees on them, topography, et cetera. You know, when I look at this map, at one point, all of this land was probably most likely agriculture. It came into the city as SF40 when it was annexed into the Highland Village, and then over time, it has been developed in terms of commercial, residential, school, et cetera. And so, the surrounding area, the neighborhood, has come in and been developed as SF8, so those are 8,000-square-foot lots. That lends and yields to a density of about 5.4 units per acre, and that's important to remember that number, and we'll come back to that. But, the people who had owned this home before had remained, and so, the zoning had remained SF40 until it was time for them to sell and to move on with their lives. And so, when I look at this piece, it's kind of the leftover piece that hasn't been developed yet. It really doesn't belong as an SF40 lot in this area. It needs to provide more value, for more infrastructure for the area and the city that Highland Village has become. Under all circumstances, you know, every, every elementary school that I've ever gone to or visited, or that my kids have visited, is nestled in a neighborhood. Residential uses in neighborhoods go hand-in-hand with school-aged children. You know, it eliminates the need to, to drive to school, to have a bus, et cetera. Any children that would come to live in our neighborhood would be able to walk to their elementary school. Also, kind of look in terms of planning about scale, right? So, we talk about the SF, you know, 8,000 lots surrounding us, those are larger lots, larger homes. I think this is a really great opportunity to take a smaller piece of property that's very square in nature, but still add homes, you know, of similar value, but to add diversification of housing for the city of Highland Village. In terms of patio homes, they are usually smaller square footages, as well as smaller lot sizes, for maybe the homeowner who doesn't need to take care of the 3,500, 4,000-square-foot home and the half-acre lot, but they need something a little bit more manageable for that certain stage of life. We can talk about that more as well. Next, I think it's important to always take into consideration, you know, the comprehensive plan. There has been a lot of discussion in the comprehensive plan as relates to this, this project. So, the comprehensive plan was published in 2023, and I would say it mostly, after reading through it cover to cover, talks a lot about parks. It talks a lot about trails and amenities that the citizens of Highland Village want to see in their community. Roughly only about 10, 10% of the actual documents focused on development are what we call in this area, opportunity zones. A lot of folks have been saying that this development is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is a screenshot that took directly from the published comprehensive plan on the website, and this opportunity area number three specifically calls out a 1.72-acre site. 102 Barnett is, is more than 1.72 acres. It is not referring to this property. It is referring to the little property right there behind the Whataburger. And so, I think it's important to recognize that this area that we're talking about, 102 Barnett Boulevard, has always been a residential use. We're just changing the residential use to patio homes. The comprehensive plan is still intact for that 1.72, and I would say absolutely, it probably does need to be more office and commercial as it sits closer to FM 407. And so, I just want to kind of clarify that, you know, for the audience and for everyone here, you know, that we are trying to stay consistent with the comprehensive plan. Also, this particular parcel was acquired by the developer, Mr. Broadway, in August of 2021. It was months before the comprehensive plan study contract was awarded in October of 2021. The developer at that point was already actively engaged with the city in the preliminary proposal of what this parcel should be. Developer's also been in constant engagement for over 18 months before the new comprehensive plan was published by city council in February of 2023. And so, I do think it is a great opportunity before you here tonight, and we're going to kind of dive into the project, because I don't want to spend a lot of time on, you know, focusing on other matters, but I want to show you the beauty of this project. Okay, so Magnolia Village is going to be a community consisting of 25 luxury patio homes. Each home offers front-entry garages with also front-entry driveways that will offer additional off-street parking. The homes are, you know, they're situated to be front-entry because we really want to maximize those backyards and, and side yards for the residents, giving them ample space to still enjoy, entertain, and to have pets. All these homes are three bedrooms. The floor plans are thoughtfully designed. They're offering flex spaces, studies, large open concept living. I would tell you that this next generation of buyers, they're not necessarily interested in the large homes that are offering the formal living and the formal dining and the formal library that they have to furnish and clean, but they never use. They're kind of looking for more of a usable approach of what they can actually, A, afford, and then, B, use to the best of their ability. And so, I really love this site plan because it provides good circulation, good use of the private guards, but it also adds to the community accessibility in terms of sidewalks, so there will be a sidewalk programmed along Barnett Boulevard. So, right now, there's no sidewalks, so if someone was walking to school, they would actually have to get in the road and then get back on once they reach the school property. So, we'll be providing that sidewalk. Along Barnett Boulevard, there will also be a six-foot-tall masonry screen fence that will be landscaped. As we mentioned earlier, there'll be the traditional neighborhood six-foot board-on-board cedar fence along the perimeter, and then, we've recently, you know, been working with the neighbors to kind of solve property line issues, trying to save trees along that property line, and also, they've just requested the developer replace their current fence with an eight-foot fence, just as theirs is today, but newer. The trees along the perimeter are to be preserved, with the exception of a few in the northwest corner due to how close they are in the foundation. That was been in just collaboration with the neighbors. They want to still use that as a privacy screen to preserve nature and other creatures that live in those trees, particularly owls. And then, we've also have left those 20-foot backyards along that side. I think it's also to point out that those homes, the nine homes along that western boundary are to remain one-story homes. Just not so there was no invasion of privacy across the way, you're not looking over into someone's backyard, et cetera. We're committed to doing that. This slide just kind of shows the progression of this development. You know, back in 2022, it started out of 60 townhomes, probably a little bit too dense for this area and this small of four-acre site, transitioning that to 39 townhomes. That was supported by planning and zoning and did get a supermajority vote from the city council here, just did not, or got a majority vote, but not a supermajority vote from here at our last council. And so, just throughout this transition, we've just been massaging the site plan, working with neighbors, and I really feel like we've come out with a really desirable product for those who are most impacted. Kind of want to go back to that. So, you know, we talked earlier about the surrounding neighborhood being 8,000-square-foot lots, and that yielding about 5.45 dwelling units per acre. So, these 25 homes on this type of acreage yields about 6.25. So, we're really only talking about a two-to-three home difference in terms of density. So, it's going to feel very connected, very similar to the neighborhood surrounding us, but just offering a different floor plan. Instead of a large yard and a large home, you're kind of, you're, but you're not, you're not suffering or giving up quality in terms of those things. You're just getting something of different value for a different type of home buyer. So, I will actually probably be using this, this process as a case study when I go and talk to other cities, when I go and teach other classes, when I go and engage developers and other planners out into, out in the developing world, because this has been a really, really good case study in terms of collaboration and neighborhood engagement. Mr. Broadway has taken the time to consult with the elementary school next door. The principal there and the leadership kind of reported that, yeah, they're seeing quite a decline in, of student enrollment. In the 2010, 2011 school year, they had about enrollment of about 705 children, and this current school year of 2024 to 25 is 480. And so, I think that gradual decline goes to a lot of factors, but a big one is just families are aging out, but also families are not moving out, and there's not a lot of different housing supply to bring new families in that might bring in younger families who have school-aged children. Also, too, you know, throughout this process, as Scott and staff mentioned, you know, this last one, the neighbors were opposed. They, they didn't want two-story homes. They didn't feel like their voices were being heard and their needs were being met. But throughout this process, we have gained support of the neighbors who are most impacted, to the point where they have written you letters, letters, you know, talking about how collaborative Mr. Broadway has been, and, and how he's agreed to certain things that were important to them, and they've worked together to find solutions for their most important issues that were important to them. And so, I've kind of circled this area, so out of 923 Heather Glenn, 931 Enverness, and 927 Enverness, those were properties that were previously opposed enough to sign those were properties that were previously opposed enough to sign a protest, but that now have actually changed to support this type of development. And I think that just speaks volumes of the process and what we have kind of gone through in order to present to you this development plan tonight. Kind of going back, I, I love the architecture of these homes and the attention to detail that Mr. Broadway has put into them. They kind of fit in that more traditional transitional architectural style. But if you'll notice, just the varying roof pitches along the roof lines, they're programmed to have ten-foot ceiling plate heights. There's brick and stone detailing around the homes, around the windows and the doors of the homes. It's just like a little added detail that adds cost, but also screams quality. And the painted carriage-style garage doors add to the front architectural detailing. These are beautiful, and they're going to age well. Also too, even with a smaller community of twenty-five homes, you don't want a monotonous community. And so for these twenty-five homes, there are going to be four different color schemes, three of which have two different colored bricks on the homes, and the fourth scheme is painted white. So you can kind of see that you're going to get a really vibrant, dynamic community that will not feel monotonous. This is an example of one of those nine two-story, or sorry, one-story homes along that western side. I'm going to flip back over to this slide so you can kind of see a little bit of like the difference, kind of using little roof gables, shed roofs, different kind of windows to add just different architectural features so that they look and feel different. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on these floor plans. This is the smallest, one of the single stories, a little over sixteen hundred square feet. But some of the things that I want you to pay attention to that really add value to a home, okay, is right there you can see, and it's two and a half baths, but even in that secondary bath, there are, there are two separate sinks. That is a little attention to detail that makes all the difference in the world to home buyers, families with small children who don't want their kids to have to fight over the sink and whatnot, just really providing those thoughtful spaces, little drop zone when you come in from the garage, a place for backpacks and purses and things of that nature, just the attention to detail. This one getting a little bit bigger, has a little bit more open concept kitchen and dining and a covered patio. This is the, one of the larger ones at twenty-five hundred square feet. It's three bedrooms and a study. But upstairs in that study, you do have a closet and a window, so it could be a small nursery or a small fourth bedroom should you need to. You have the flex space upstairs, separate living area, TV watching area, play space for the children. But once again, just really, really thoughtful spaces in, in terms of, of utilizing the square footage that you have. This is the larger floor plan, thirty-two hundred square feet. It has all of the bedrooms upstairs, including the primary, but keeping that study downstairs. It also features two different dining areas. This is kind of be more of your entertainer's dream house. It's got a nice wraparound porch to make use of that rear inside yard that's traditional in patio homes. So one item that repeatedly comes up with any development is traffic or the perception thereof. The good thing is that traffic is a quantitative value that we can actually speak to. So first, I think it's important to point out that there was a traffic study completed in twenty twenty-one. It was performed at the request of the city when the development was proposing sixty townhomes. The conclusion of that study was that FM four oh seven had the capacity for ten thousand additional cars and that light was not warranted at the intersection of Barnett and four oh seven. Those conditions have not radically changed over the past few years. While this development was, has been reduced in this number of homes, and Heritage Elementary student population has continued to decline. This slide exhibits the minimal impact that twenty-five homes would have on that seven to eight M hour school drop-off time. If the residents, you know, even have school age children, they're most likely walking their kids to school and not adding to that additional traffic. Okay, so one of the things that keeps coming up as a theme across this is just affordability of homes, I think, in these day and age. So this is taking, we want to kind of compare apples to apples as much as we can. So taking those homes that are built, you know, most recently, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, and then sold in the past twelve months, kind of, kind of averaging those out. You can see the minimum and maximum and the, and the median right there. But they're really, you know, that average comes out, the sole price, upper seven hundreds. We're kind of, I think Mr. Broadway is conservatively pricing these at, you know, roughly like five hundred and fifty thousand. It is a smaller lot size, smaller square footage if we're kind of looking at a per square foot basis. But that's kind of where it would fall in line for this, adding to the housing diversity you have here in Highland Village, and then maybe offering a different type of home for sale to a different home buyer. You know, so I think it's, you know, we go back to the comprehensive plan, and we talk about building the parks and the trails and all of the awesome amenities that your residents get to enjoy. Those are not necessarily revenue generating assets for the city, but they do, they do cost money, right? They cost money to install and they cost money in upkeep. Even soccer fields, when it rains and there's games, those fields have to be redone before the next weekend for those kids can play soccer again. And so what I love about this is taking this, this kind of more vacant piece of property that's not generating a lot of tax revenue for the city, but providing value that is now taxable and can generate that revenue year over year so that you can continue to provide those amazing trails and parks and amenities to your residents and to your citizens that they've kind of come to expect. And I think also too, it's just you're continuing to add to the infrastructure and to the development of your city through using private dollars. That sidewalk is not going to get installed with public money. It's going to be done by the developer at the developer's cost. And so I think it's just another way of kind of going forward that you can utilize the resources that are, that are coming ahead of you. And so I know that you have a decision kind of ahead of you tonight in terms, but I, I do want to reiterate, this project has, has gone through the process, and it's gone through the process, I would say gracefully, to the point where it has been collaborative with the neighbors who have been most impacted. Those neighbors have, have now kind of changed their opinion. They know what they're getting. They feel informed. And I think that we're just in a place where we need to, to honor, you know, that process and that request. And let's go and, let's get a really, really beautiful development on the ground for Highland Village. So happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Council, does anybody have any questions?
I do.
For, oh, okay.
I mean, are we going to let them speak first?
Well, I thought we would ask questions and then we'll do the public hearing. And then if we got more questions, then we can do that.
First of all, I guess I want to start off with, thanks for coming. And, but Mr. Broadway bought the property in December of twenty twenty-two, according to the tax records, not August of twenty twenty-one. This is actually shown on the comprehensive plan and highlighted on pages one eighty-three, two fifty-two, two eighty-seven, two ninety-three, two ninety-four, and three sixty-four. So here's the comp plan. We spent half a million dollars. So my question, my first question is, is when did you schedule the community meeting that invited all the residents within two hundred feet, and how were they invited?
Are you talking in reference like way back in twenty twenty-one?
Anytime.
Mr. Broadway has been known all the way back in twenty-one to go door to door, having conversations with the neighbors.
No formal meeting wherever, he invited all the neighbors and made sure he talked to them?
I would guess it would, all of the conversations were not formal, as in this type of formal, but Mr. Broadway has gone door to door to all the neighbors beginning in twenty twenty-one. And he was, he did, while the purchase did not come into fruition until December of twenty twenty-two, he did have the project under contract.
Oh, I understand. I just, he did not buy the property until December twenty twenty-two, and you stated August twenty-one. So my next question is, is I provided some handouts. How do you, with the parking, how do you comply with the Texas State Transportation Code, section five forty-three point three oh two?
Can you please provide that handout that you're referencing?
States stopping, standing, or parking of vehicles and prohibited in certain places. An operator of vehicle may not stop, stand, or park a vehicle on a sidewalk. And the city manager confirmed that that's not allowed. So you have sixteen feet, the average vehicle size is eighteen feet, so where are we parking our vehicles?
I don't believe that the average vehicle size is eighteen feet.
For planning purposes and in the MUTCD and the standards of Highland Village, the use is eighteen feet, and the proper parking space in Highland Village is nine by twenty feet. Trucks measure eighteen feet. So again, how are we parking our vehicles in the driveway without covering the sidewalk?
So the design ordinance that we have to meet for zoning criteria outlines that we need to provide two off-street parking spaces. So that has been complied with in terms of the garage. Hold on, may I please finish speaking? And then the two tandem spaces in the driveway are additional on top of to the code. And so the, the two off-street spaces required for a patio home based on your design criteria has been met with the garage portion. The tandem parking spaces are in addition to the requirement.
I understand, but we also have to comply with the Texas Transportation Code, and according to the city manager, it is not in compliance. So we, yes, we have our codes, but we have to comply with the Texas Transportation Code. So if you cannot park the vehicles in the driveway, how do they fit on the street?
Well, okay, that's a really great question. So on the street, we're providing a thirty-foot right-of-way, which is the same number of pavement from curb to curb as you would find at a fifty-foot right-of-way. So there are, there is enough on-street ability to park on the street, should it be necessary. It is going to be a public roadway. When we had conversations with staff, we talked about making it a private roadway, even a gated community. And it was ultimately determined that twenty-five homes would not be able to carry the burden of street maintenance going on in terms of HOA fees, and that they would be looking for the city to repair that street anyways. And so in collaboration with staff, they said, you know, we need to go ahead and make that a public roadway. It does provide thirty feet back-to-back, which is plenty of space for one car to be parked and still have two lanes of traffic to get by, plus a fire truck or an emergency vehicle, because a typical fire lane is twenty-four feet wide. And so, you know, I'd say in most neighborhoods, you're right. People make choices that make situations where they're not compliant. But it's not a, it's not a compliance issue that's ongoing all the time, one hundred percent of the time. I think as a citizen, you make them aware that you need to not park in the driveway. But how many times do you pull in your driveway and maybe not pull up all the way, and you're blocking the sidewalk, and you don't mean to? That's not the intent. But I would challenge, are all the driveways in Highland Village eighteen, nineteen feet?
Actually, our code requires a driveway garage to be twenty foot from the right-of-way line, which is typically a foot from the sidewalk line. So yes, all the garages that face the street are in compliance with the Texas Transportation Code, except for this one. And you did say it's thirty-one feet back-to-back, but actually it's thirty-one, I mean thirty feet. It's thirty-one foot back-to-back, and the street right-of-way doesn't include all of the street infrastructure. So we're having a right-of-way, but we're not including the curb nor the subgrade, which again, never has happened in Highland Village in at least twenty-five years.
So that's not completely accurate in the way you're saying that. So the way we're doing the roadway structure is you have all the components that you would typically find in a fifty-foot right-of-way. You have the pavement from curb to curb, which is the same, the thirty feet. You also have the, the parkway, the sidewalk, the utility easement. All those things are typically combined in what you consider a fifty-foot right-of-way. When you say fifty feet, the public typically thinks, oh, I'm getting fifty feet of pavement. That's not what that really refers to. It refers to the sidewalk, the dedication for utilities and whatnot. All of those things are provided in our development. A normal, everyday citizen would not know the difference as to what is there and what is not there, because it's all there. It's a plating exercise.
Actually, it's not. So, no, fifty-foot right-of-way is not taxable property. So you are putting on our future residents a financial inadequacy that is not on other residents. So we're taxing ten percent of the property that is a property from the traditional right-of-way to the back of curb. So no, it's actually giving them a financial disadvantage, which again, no subdivision in Highland Village has had, at least in the last twenty-five years. So it is matter, because when I fight my tax bill, it's everything counts. So we're taxing them on property that has, that is not taxed. So they do notice, and people do notice. And the infrastructure is important, because the road infrastructure is not from curb to curb. It's actually two feet outside of that. So if you're going to have a road right-of-way, at the very least, you need to have thirty-five feet. The reason why our minimum's forty feet is for that exact matter, to include all of the road components, which includes the pavement, the curbs, and the subgrade. So again, you're asking for something that has not been approved in Highland Village, and that's why I'm asking these questions, because we're asking for a financial advantage on this development that no developers had. No developers have gotten to move their property line forward an additional ten feet before, because if the other developments, like Wichita and the one over there off of Chapel Hill State, the reserve at Chapel Hill, they could have gotten a ten percent more yield if they would have played the, let's make the right-of-way, the road right-of-way not even as wide as the road. So it does matter, because our residents, property taxes are a thing, and our residents pay property taxes. And so we are going to look at this plan, and we are going to approve a plan that we're taxing them that no other resident with curb and gutter streets paying for. So it does matter, and it's not just a plating exercise. I take offense to that, because it does matter. Everything matters. It matters we follow the transportation code. In fact, these are all the codes that need to be followed. We have the Code of Ordinances, the Comprehensive Plan, the Future Land Use Plan, the Highland Village General Standard Details, the Highland Village SCC Manual of Utility Streets Drainage and Standards, the Highland Village Drainage Criteria Manual, and the Annual Comprehensive Report. So I know this has gone through a lot of iterations, but a lot of the citizens have, have spent a year and a half and a half a million dollars, and this property was talked about. So, and when I've talked to the residents that, that have in this neighborhood, there, there wasn't like a community meeting. The residents of all the ones within two hundred feet, I, I get that. And I know this is like putting a square peg in a round hole, but there's a reason we have regulations, and there's a reason we have rules. I mean, I have even, I have questions, for instance, our code does not allow dead-end streets. We have dead-end streets. We have two. Per the, dead-end street per subdivision design standard, section three, three point one, section zero. A cul-de-sac street shall be no longer six hundred feet. Dead-end streets are not allowed except to provide for access to the adjacent land areas, and in no case shall be more than two hundred and fifty feet in length or equal to the depth whatevers greater. Our, the site plan has two dead-end streets. The development's not stubbing to the connect to future development. The city design codes are very standard. In addition, there's exhibits that shows exactly how to do it. A cul-de-sac is shown the dimensions on sheet nineteen of the detail sheets. So again, there are standards, and I think that's where the disconnect is, is the city has certain standards that are followed. And coming out and, and just saying it's a plating exercise, it's not. Do you know how we fund our trails in Highland Village? Not through property tax, through sales tax revenue. Do you know that Mr., our Assistant City Manager? So he's worked really hard for our city for over thirty years to keep us financially on the straight and narrow. And his, his financial reports he signs every year. And he says that during the budget, in the process, he says, based on the comp plan and future land use plan, what is the long-term budget, oh, sorry. He puts on there that we have to look forward to our future growth, because we're going to be build-out. So we need to, we need to go to all of our commercial areas wherever we can along the four oh seven corridor and make sure we extend that. And, and when you tell me that this process, this program, this development is nestled in a neighborhood, it's not. It is on a street that's all commercial. It doesn't connect to any other street. It is all commercial. So I, I understand the rosy picture, and I think it's wonderful, but let's be honest. We need sales tax dollars. We have gone through these budget, budget after budget. We just finished it. We're progressing, we're hitting build-out. These residents, and These residents, and again, six, seven different places in this comprehensive plan stated the percentages of who wanted to be, of what they wanted. And guess what? Of all the online surveys, all the focus groups, everything else, guess how many people voted for residential homes in this area? That would be zero. So it is important. We've engaged our entire community on this. So it's not just a plating exercise. It's our home. We moved here for a reason. We want to grow our tax base. We want more sales tax revenue. So that is why people, we spent a year and a half having that drilled into our head. We need sales tax. We need to take the commercial we have. We need this. So I understand wanting to do this, but I also, it's not, I do take huge offense that it's not just a plating exercise. And if that's how we're being viewed, I just, that's not, that's not Highland Village. That's not why people move to Highland Village is, but, but we need to be fair and we need to treat all developers the same. And there's, things are being asked for. So you're asking for a street width that does not constrain the, all the street infrastructure, a front building setback that is five feet closer to the road than it's been approved in any residential development in 25 years. You cannot park two vehicles in front of each home because there's a driveway and you can't block the driveway. So you get one off-street parking. People aren't going to park in other people's in front of their driveways. That doesn't, parking in front of a driveway doesn't count, plus where fire hydrants are and where the stop sign is. You're also asking for dead-end streets, which we don't allow. You're requesting a financial advantage that no other developer has gotten. You're asking that 20% of the right-of-way be put in residential lots and taxed on. I don't know why you're smirking. It's very, this is a very important thing. It's not just a plating exercise. So that's why I'm asking these questions.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
When I say it's a plating exercise, I'm talking about the lot lines. All of the components are still there. And I understand what you're saying in terms of that's what they're taxed on, but also too, I think that there's a component, addressing that first, there is a component of a home buyer who knows where their property line is and is making that choice.
But you just said they don't realize it. So you can't have both.
I'm talking about someone who's walking down the street in the public realm. They're not missing a sidewalk. That was my intent, is they're not, not having a section of grass, a place to put utilities, a place to walk on. That is my intent and what I'm saying, all of the components are there.
I completely agree.
Okay, so can I, can I continue? Okay. So with that, a home buyer who's coming in and purchasing this lot, knowing what their lot square footage and what they're going to be taxed on per se, they're aware of that when they're making that purchase. They're aware of that choice and they actually know what their taxes are going to be when they purchase that home. That's a part of the home buyer process. And so while yes, we are offering a diversification in terms of housing type, they also are aware of what that is, that they're making a choice to pay taxes on as a home buyer. Okay? So then that being said, as well, you know, I, coming from the planning world, we go through and cities do a lot of comprehensive plans. You have experience with this. A lot of times consultants come in and they're like, oh, it's along a busy road. We're going to stripe it red. That means commercial. But that doesn't necessarily mean the commercial's going to thrive there. Commercial and certain uses that create sales tax that you're speaking of, they also are selling eyeballs. They're selling visibility. This parcel, from a commercial standpoint, does not have the visibility. If we want to go back to the comprehensive plan and say, okay, it was included. I don't see in the comprehensive plan where it was included in terms of where it is called out as opportunity zone three. Okay? But we want to go back to that. I think it's important to recognize that when you have a planner and you're saying, and you have a whole bunch of citizens say, okay, I want an HEB right down the street. Okay, well, so do I, but HEB is not coming to my hometown, right? And so we can say what we want, all we want, but there are tons of other market studies that these commercial entities, restaurants, office buildings, and things like that, that they take into consideration when they choose sites. And that site has to be for sale, right? So you have to have all those things come together. The site has to be for sale. You have to have the right buyer. It has to be something that the citizens desire. Well, citizens can say they want anything. It's like making a Christmas list, right? But if the market conditions are not right, so I would ask, when you do these comprehensive plans, are you getting the expertise for each individual market of what you want when you say you want it to go there? In land development, there's so many layers. You have a very square site that you're trying to make use of. I, I don't know. That's the whole purpose of having a plan development, to be honest with you. The whole purpose of having a plan development is to create unique spaces that don't fit into the box of city ordinances because there's no way that any city in the state of Texas can create an ordinance to fit every single thing in their city. It's unrealistic. You're not going to come across every single piece of property that's going to fit into this box and every single element. You don't. And so you have things in your code, like plan developments, where you get to be creative. Because you know what value comes from? Value comes from getting to be creative.
I understand that, but we spent half a million dollars for the same consultant you're using that brought in the experts, that told us the market and did all the research and they still came up with this opportunity area. And let me go on our Code of Ordinances, just so you know what we have to judge our zoning cases by. Chapter 28A, Part Two Administrative and Procedures 10.2. The review criteria in making a determination regarding a requested zoning change, the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Councils shall consider the following. Whether the use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the purpose stated in each zoning district, whether the use is permitted by the proposed change will be appropriate to the immediate area concerned in the relationship to the general area in the city as a whole. The comprehensive plan states, with limited time remaining in the city, the distinct planning documents will help guide and shape future opportunities. Page 11. Community engagement is an essential part of planning process. The most effective comprehensive plans are firmly rooted in realities and vision of the community who created them. The primary feedback revolved around density, proximity to existing housing and desire to keep taxes under control, hence why we want to grow sales tax. Page 175. The estimate that every dollar tax revenue received by the city for a residential development, $1, will cost the city $1.40. However, a commercial development costs the city $0.40. To ensure the continual financial stewardship in Highland Village, each property needs to be evaluated to ensure the recommendations is being made to ensure success. Page 221. The comprehensive plan and update shall be the city's lead and overall policy guide for the growth and development in Highland Village. Page 249. Proposed land use financial benefit table. Single-family, low financial benefit, high cost of service. Office, moderate financial benefit, moderate cost of service. Retail, high financial benefit, low cost of service. These citizens spent a year and a half. We did focus groups. We did surveys. We did open houses. So, and we brought in half a million dollars' worth of experts from all over the country to look at this. So it's not just a whim. It's not, oh, we want an HEB. It actually was done by professionals to the tune of half a million dollars. Do you know what half a million dollars can buy for a city? An ambulance. We just went through our budget process. So I understand that, oh, it's just a comprehensive plan, but this is the guiding document that we spent half a million dollars to do. Half a million dollars. And so it's not just a whim. And you know what? All the property along that street is being developed as commercial. It's all filling in and popping in. The reason this hasn't, I don't know. Right now, because it was probably taken off the market to take the square peg and put it in the round hole. But so with the property, and this is from our, with the property limited, and this is from our financial statement, with limited property remaining undeveloped and commercial property in Highland Village primarily located along 407 and 2499, the city focused on remaining undeveloped property to complete, ensure compatibility, high development. An additional overlay was developed for this area to apply standards that will assure the highest and best use of potential for increased sales tax revenue while maintaining the high quality of life. So I understand all of this, but we as a city council, and again, everybody will make their decision, but we're given a manual on how to decide these things. And we spent half a million dollars with financial advisors, with all of that, on how to make a decision. So it wasn't just a whim, oh, we want this. That's not what happened. It was actually a very thought-out process. And I thank the previous council for giving us this 500 and something page manual to work with. So I understand where we're at and how we got here, but the reality of what our community's been through and what our citizens, and making sure we grow the sales tax, we just spent two and a half months in budget process. We need to grow our sales tax. So I guess what I'm saying is, is on our future land use map, this is mixed use with commercial. On our comprehensive plan, again, it's called out on six different pages and even maps showing it. So, so I understand what you're saying, but I guess those are my questions is, is we're, I understand the homeowner will know that they're buying this, but why are we putting a development in, doing, no other community in Highland Village with curb and gutter has done this. It's a 50-foot right-of-way. We have a 40-foot minimum for a reason. So it's not just a street variation that we're asking for. There's a laundry list of things. The most biggest one being, we don't comply with the transportation code.
So would it make you feel better if we dedicated the 50-foot right-of-way and asked for a reduced setback and thus reducing the taxable impact on the future resident? Because we can slice it that way if that would make more sense to you.
I want to make sure you comply with our rules. And the reason we changed it is so we could get the density so you could make the performa work. I understand that. I 100% understand it. But yeah, start with on the same footing that everybody else has started on, at 50 foot. And, and because the comparison chart makes it look like it's all the same, but when you look at it visually, it's not. And push the garage back an additional five feet so you can park the cars in the driveway. Because we should not be approving any plan where residents are just going to, oh, I'm not going to park in my driveway. I mean, that's ridiculous. We need to follow our rules. We need to follow, I mean, our manuals. And just asking for a street variance is not, is not just all this is.
So would your recommendation be to dedicate the 50-foot right-of-way? Because we have capacity to do that in terms of where the plat lines are going to go for the 50-foot right-of-way that reduces the taxable impact to the future resident and then we ask for a variance in the setback? Is that your recommendation?
I'm just, my recommendation is to follow our code and the minimum square footage is 5,000 square feet. So however you can get 5,000 square feet within our code.
You know what? I think we're going to, I have a ton of, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Again, there's, I have a lot, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I think, I think at the end of the day, you know, we're taking a residential use and we're going to a different residential use.
I think, so those are all good.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. So I believe, John, you, you have your light on.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to ask a question of Scott. Okay? He came to council with a recommendation. He said there was one variance required. I understand Councilman Hurst brought a lot of issues and my question is, are the issues that Councilman Hurst is raising at odds with our ordinances? And maybe we need to look at those? Or is it odds with the development? Because you said the development meets everything except one request. That's what I'm trying to understand.
To staff's understanding, they're asking for one variance, which is the 30-foot right-of-way.
All right. So if I listen to that, then basically we may have an argument with the way our ordinances are written or maybe implemented, okay? But the way it's been presented to council, and I'm not a developer, but I don't want the developer to make that argument because to me, that's an argument that's to be had with the city. Okay? And then secondly, is I think we will have a discussion later amongst council members where we can discuss our pros and cons and we can also address the issue of comprehensive plan and what's in it. And I understand it's a thousand pages and there's a lot of relics in there that shows that zoning piece that was in there, that property. But you know what? Let's talk about that when we get to council discussion. I think we'll have that opportunity. That's the two things I wanted to make. Thank you, ma'am.
Turn around. This is a zoning request change. It's not a plat. This is your time to negotiate with the developer to relocate stuff.
Okay.
You know, to Councilwoman Hurst's point, yes, there's a sidewalk there. You know, stuff can be moved. Stuff can be deleted. It's, it's a negotiation at this, at this point.
Thank you.
Councilman Fierrenza?
I do have a couple of questions, but I think I can delay them for further discussion if we want to do the public hearing first. But I do have one clarification I'd like to get from the developer if possible. You stated early on that we are, we're looking at, we currently have a single SF40 looking at a plan development. Before you, when you were discussing the best possible use for this piece of property, what other uses did you look at and what reasons did you eliminate those?
So if we really want to go in terms of highest and highest use, okay? So it's, it's a combination. The highest use may not be the best use, right? And it's also maybe not what the community stakeholders want or what's more beneficial to the neighbors. There's a whole bunch of components that go in with that. So the first thing you look at when you have a site that's roughly four to five acres, the number one thing you, you ask for, and this is going to be a dirty word to y'all, multifamily. In all reality, putting multifamily on this site would give you the most taxable revenue, more than office, more, more than anything. But it's not the best for the community. So you kind of have to take that off the table, right? So then you think, okay, you do a simple density study. This is before Dusty had hired me. He had brought before you the 60-town homes, okay? 60-town homes on four acres, that's a lot too. Okay? That's a lot. That's a lot of cars. It's, that's a lot. I don't think that that was the best. But still, you're now offering at least a single-family individually-platted property that doesn't necessarily need a yard component or whatnot. So you're maxing out, maxing out that land base because you are limited. And then, you know, we kind of came back and did more of less town homes is kind of where it was the next iteration. I thought that was a really good plan, to be honest with you. But still, you are missing that community engagement piece of getting those neighbors who are most impacted. They really didn't want to see a two-story home up next to their yards. That was their personal preference. And so next kind of came down to this, even more of a reduction in density. So from those 60-town homes to these 25 homes, you've reduced your density by like 58%. You know, change over change. And so, and then being able to concentrate those one-bedroom, not one-bedroom, one-story homes over here on the western property line and still giving them a 20-foot deep backyard, which is a pretty substantial backyard and a pretty good buffer. It also allows us to stay out of those trees that provide the natural privacy screening and whatnot for those other neighbors. And so when you really start talking about highest and best use, I would tell you the office or commercial here, you're going to lose all the trees because you're going to need parking and you're going to need bigger buildings and you're going to add more traffic, right? So all those components go into play. We make the argument that we don't want traffic on this road, but then we're asking for a commercial. Well, commercial is going to bring more traffic than 25 residential homes. And so when I talk about land development and developing being a very, very complicated, multi-layered onion, that is really what I'm trying to convey. It's all of those things coming in together. And so when I look at this piece of property, I really do feel like a smaller, single-family home for sale next to an elementary school that's tucked way back in, out of the visibility of traffic, is the conglomeration of the highest and best use.
We've had numerous conversations about the financial game from residential versus retail. We prefer retail. In the right area, retail works. And I understand when it's tucked back in the back, retail's a failing issue. We've discussed before an opportunity for medical. We've been told medical won't work there. They're all going towards Presbyterian Hospital in Flower Mountain, so it's not going to be a viable option. What we haven't talked about is an opportunity for office complex. What are the complexities of an office complex here and the viability of success for an office complex here?
Yeah. Yeah, to be honest, so office is really suffering right now in the market. It has been suffering since the pandemic. You typically see a lot of office. It's still successful where it's grouped together with other offices so that you have more, so you think about like a Los Feliz kind of Cypress Waters, kind of Irving, different corridors, close to highway transportation, close to airports and things like of that nature. You know, could you build office here? Yes. But does it really benefit the city to build a building that's going to stay empty? Not really. Because ultimately, your, the tax value comes on the tenant and like what they're paying in rent. And so if you're unable to lease it, and I don't think, to get the amount of office that you would need here, I don't think you would like that traffic number and I don't think you'd like that vacancy number in your city.
Do you know what the average number of vehicles per household is?
Yeah, it's, it's 2, 2.2 something for like this size home.
Is it a national average?
Yeah, we use the, the, it's escaping me now, the traffic engineering code is where we get our data. So even when we talk about those peak hours, so this is kind of the standard, get there, whoops, too far, you know, that, that they give you the IT trip manual. You know, it basically generates a half a car during those hours. And so then you multiply that by the amount of homes you have, which gives you the amount of cars. And then you spread that over that peak hour that you're trying to. So you're adding one car trip every five minutes. And that's if they're driving their kid to school.
But this, this graphic shows one vehicle per home?
Well, no. It's showing basically that that's generating in that hour.
During the peak hour? During, okay.
Yeah, during that hour.
I think what you're asking for is how many vehicles does, is typically at a residential home, which is...
Well, that will give me the national average, and she's provided that. I'm trying to understand this particular graphic.
Yeah.
And I wasn't following it, so.
You can break it down based on certain hours of the day. So typically, they take like 7:00 to 9:00, or they'll take like 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., where you typically have more traffic coming in and out of neighborhoods, people going in and out of work. And then they give you that amount of cars that each home would produce. And then you, you kind of do that. And that's just generalities. Of course, there's the one-off, oh, my gosh, I forgot my soccer cleats, I gotta go back. But...
I'm sure I'll have more, but I can wait till after the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Sure, of course.
Does anyone else want to have, have any questions for anybody before?
I will yield my time until later.
Anybody? Okay. Okay, then I guess we are going to have the public hearing now. Do I have speaker request?
Yes.
Speakers do not...
...in support.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Speaker that do not, that record support, so that, okay. Okay.
Please would like to speak tonight.
Okay.
And Councilmember for supporters. I'm just... Yeah, I'll have those in the package.
Oh, okay.
Because I didn't get them until this evening.
Okay, so they go with, with these that came in?
Those are all speaker request forms.
These are?
Both this and this.
But these are, okay. But the ones that want to actually speak?
This would be in the category with those.
Okay.
But I didn't get these until this evening. These are the people that want to speak.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I want to speak in Greek.
Sorry. We're gonna make this happen. Okay, so, oh, let me open the, open the public hearing. It is 8:50. And so I just, I want to first point out that we have speaker request forms who do not wish to speak, that want their, to record their vote, for support, record my support. There are 41 of those. So I'm not gonna read them all into the record. I just, I want everybody to understand that we have those.
Did we get a copy of those?
I'm sorry?
Did we get a copy of those? Because I only counted 19.
Press support. Do we...
Some of those were provided at the last meeting and some of those came in to...
Right, I logged them all. So there's 41 fours.
Yes.
May I see them?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, and then we have speaker request forms that do not wish to speak, to record their opposition. There are 23. And these are some that were from the last meeting also and some that have come in. Okay, so thank you. Ronan, do you want these as well?
How many are there?
23.
Okay, there's a total of the, I mean, so far is at least 54, but can I check those? I mean, I've kept a record of all of them. That's why I'm asking to see where they're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have several that would like to speak, so I am going to call you up. If you will state your, when I call you up, if you'll state your name and your address for the record. And then we are going to have a three-minute, because we have several, we're gonna have three-minute limitation. The lights will come, is the clock working?
Yes.
Okay, so yellow means slow down and red means stop. I always tell everyone, try to wrap up as close as when the red light comes on so that I don't have to push the button up here, because the floor beneath you will open and you will slide out and you'll pay your respects to the Veterans Memorial out on the street. So please don't make me, please don't make me use that button tonight. But it might be kind of fun, so. Okay, so first speaker, Kathy Smith.
Okay, thanks for letting me speak.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Kathy Smith, Kathy with a C, 352 Oak Forest Drive, a resident there for 45 years. So I am a Highland Village resident and I have the best interest for Highland Village. And in my opinion, homes make more sense than anything else in that area. Commercial, we have commercial and we have vacant commercial. We have the shops that have vacancies. We have office, little office parks that have vacancies. It's not guaranteed income. Homeownership is guaranteed taxing. I've been a Realtor for 35 years and we need homes in Highland Village. When I was living here, I didn't want Highland Shores back behind me. But life goes on, you know? And I'm sure that in Montclair, all of these developments came in. And it's been good for our city and we have a really well-known, it's popular. People want to live here and we don't have enough homes. We have people come to me and say, I want to live in Highland Village. Well, sorry, you're gonna have to go to Flower Mound or Lewisville. And then we have, the main thing I'm seeing are people that live in Highland Shores in big houses, want to stay in Highland Shores, but there's nothing for them to move down to. And this would be a perfect, perfect subdivision. Plus, commercial going into a school area, I don't think that's the best thing. I think it's homes going into a school area. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing me.
Okay, next, Jimmy Bassinger.
Jimmy Bassinger, I live at 210 Edgewood. I also have lived here for 45 years and seen Highland Village develop. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I agree with Councilwoman Hurst on their many problems with this development. Against it for the main reason of the comprehensive zoning ordinance that we spent a lot of time and money on. And this is not the highest and best use that was determined for that particular area. I do recognize that the opposition has decreased from the residents that live within 200 feet. That makes it a little bit more difficult to oppose it. But being the recipient of a similar development process behind me several years ago, I can see how the people get tired of dealing with threats to their, their security and their privacy. And so I can see where they would see that this might be the, the best way to solve this problem is just go ahead and get the single-story homes developed behind them. However, that's just a state where of their well-being that they, they just feel threatened by this new development that's coming in, overshadowing their, their safety and security, their privacy of their home, and they, and they just get tired of fighting it. And so I can understand that also. I am Councilwoman Hurst. I wish, I thought of all the things that she said, I would, I would be a much better speaker for it. But anyway, she did a really good job. Thank you. For my career, I was firefighter and so the fire protection aspect of these type homes are a little bit more dangerous than homes that have a little bit more space between them. Anytime the wind blows, it's a very great danger of having a fire in one home spread to the other one. And so the closer they are, the, the more dangerous they are. So as from a firefighting stance, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like these homes. But that doesn't mean people don't live in them and people don't build them that, that close. However, one of the popular concepts that, of yesteryear was the look and feel of Highland Village. And these homes don't meet the look and feel of Highland Village. It's, it's too close, too dense of housing. The right-of-way seems to be a really big problem when you pave over the, the right-of-way and then start counting that's the setback from that, the edge of the street to the front of the garage. And it's just not enough to park a car, a good-sized car. You can get a car that'll fit in that, but you know, we don't know what kind they're gonna have. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Tamara Thigpen, 482 Salmyre Lane. I'm probably gonna read most of this because it's not gonna be as exciting as it has been tonight. First off, I just want to thank all of you for your time, your service, along with the P and Z. We do depend on you all to make the right decisions for our community. And you all know, most of what everyone else has said, I agree with as an opposing person. First off, I'd like, I wanted to mention the idea of volunteer citizen committees in which Councilwoman Hurst introduced in, on August 13th, that city council meeting, and hope the council will strongly consider looking into that in 2025. Secondly, I am speaking against Agenda 14. My reasons are many, many that have been already mentioned. But my number one reason is because our comp plan was updated. It was agreed upon by the citizens, the city, the city council members. So why would the city want to change what we agreed upon? Myself and about 600 other citizens thought we could count on the city following the comp plan to eliminate this time in which we're having to invest now. Why would P and Z even present this bill to the city council when it would require a change in the specific ordinance that is agreed not to be amended? Yet here we are. Increase in tax revenue is always of great interest. We hear that all the time, to maintain our lives here. However, I hope that we can maintain our city by looking inward at ways to reduce spending and increase creativity in which we can find ways to save. The citizens are very resourceful and creative. Maybe a citizen committee can be formed to help in this regard. I'm requesting that you all vote no to Agenda 14, which sends a strong message to builders seeking to build multifamily apartments, et cetera, in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Wayne and Wayne, I know your last name, but I can't read it on your paper, so.
Augsburg.
Oh, just go with, yeah.
All right, my name is Wayne Augsburg. I live at 923 Inverness. I'm not gonna be the most elegant speaker, but I'm totally against this project for a lot of different reasons. Let's just go back to us to start out with heritage hawks. We have a hawk that lives back there. The second they come in there, that hawk's gone. We have, you know, it's just the safety aspect. Putting 26 homes back there, we're gonna end up getting sued by the Housing Act like they did with the Bowery Project, because they were supposed to be homes back there and condos, if you guys remember. They got sued by the, by the, what was it, Housing Act or whatever? And then they had to put in apartments back there. Same thing's gonna happen here. Once we change the zoning, then they can do whatever they want later on. We need to keep it SF-40. We need to keep the way it is. We need to keep up with the plan that we have for Highland Village. And putting these little tract homes, they're not gonna be sufficient. Nobody's gonna buy a $500,000, 1,600-square-foot house. That's what they just said. It's gonna be $500,000. Nobody's gonna pay for that. That's all I really have to say. I'm sorry, but...
Thank you, Wayne.
Y'all have a great day.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Bill Saret. Bill Saret, you're up. You don't. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, you were, all right. And then Scott Mulaney? I hope I said that right.
Excuse me, mayor.
I'm sorry.
The last one that you listed, was he in favor or opposed to this?
My name's Scott Mulaney. I live at 213 Edgewood Drive. I oppose his homes. They're very nice homes. They look very nice. But I frequent that area quite a bit because we do business at the credit union there and the veterinarian across the street there and also Whataburger, which is nice. But when I'm over there, I think, man, I gotta plan my way to get out of this street, because it's a dead-end street. You can't, you can't go, once you get in there, you gotta come back out, you know, the same way you came in, pretty much, unless you want to cut through the parking lot of the, what was it, Highland Village businesses down there? I can't remember the name of them right now, but, and it's just with an extra 25 homes back there with more cars coming in and out, I'm thinking, this is gonna be tough. And then, plus in the future, when Flower Mound decides to build back on their side over there at the Cottonwood Arena, I mean, you're talking about a lot of traffic in that area. And no telling, that's a lot of land over there, but that doesn't have anything to do with this, pretty much. But, and it, to me, it, it just doesn't fit. There's no homes really back there. And to me, it'd be a much better use as a medical offices, perhaps, or something in that commercial industry. And that's why I oppose it and hope that y'all see that, the, the traffic on that street. I don't see how the parents get out of that, out of that street when they're, when they're leaving, you know, because you can't turn, you can't turn left at certain times of the day because there's so much traffic. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. And to your question, Patty O'Hallam, it doesn't, Bill, you didn't mark, he didn't mark at the bottom of the page, so. You were in opposition or you were in support? Huh?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so is that all of the speaker request forms that we have? No other? No other speaker request form? Okay, well then, no more? I'm gonna close the public hearing at 9:05. I'm sorry? The public hearing is closed at 9:05 and you're turning on my light again, but...
Okay, well, you go ahead. I'm just getting ready.
No, I don't want to speak. You can, you go ahead. It's just, I don't know why we're so far away. I mean, we're not in, we're not in the right spot. I mean, we're not, we're not in the right spot.
No, as I mentioned a while ago, I'd like to address a couple things with city management and our city attorney. First off, just good. What's the purpose of a comprehensive plan?
Let me give a microphone here. I'll go first, and then Kevin can certainly chime in as well. But a comprehensive plan essentially is a guide for the future development of a city. And as ours has done, it includes the park plan, the trail plan, the thoroughfare plan, and the 407 corridor study. So it is a guide for future development and/or redevelopment.
Okay. When was the previous plan approved?
Previous plan was approved in 1995, and there were amendments done in '96 and '97.
Okay. Okay. And this would be for our legal counsel? Is the plan a legally binding document?
If you're, well, there's a couple of different ways to answer that question. The plan, a comprehensive plan does not constitute zoning. In fact, it is not a zoning regulation in and of itself. In fact, yeah, in fact, I'll just read you the language from the local government code. Basically says, "A map of a comprehensive plan illustrating future land use shall contain the following clearly visible statement." And of course, you know, your zoning map has to have this on there as well as your future land use map. Quote, and this is out of state law, "A comprehensive plan shall not constitute zoning regulations or establish zoning district boundaries." That's, you know, so to the extent that we're talking about, now, I will say that, but let me also go on to say, in all fairness, and in anticipation somebody may raise the issue, the, as far as general zoning regulations, the local government code, Section 21104 also says, "Zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan, must be designed to lessen congestion in the streets, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promote health and general welfare, provide adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population, or facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, school, parks, and other public requirements." So to that extent, you know, your zoning ordinances have to be adopted, as it says, in accordance with the comprehensive plan. But again, the comprehensive plan itself is not zoning, and this kinda starts sounding a little circular, but, you know, it serves as a guide. Does that mean every single zoning ordinance has to be tooth and, you know, every T and I complying, literally in line with comprehensive plan? I don't believe so, because again, the comprehensive plan is a more general guideline of setting the policy with respect to, with respect to the ultimate adoption of zoning regulations within a city.
Okay.
So, I mean, and kind of a, you know, I'm starting, kinda crossing over into planning language there, but as opposed to the legal, but that's essentially what the relationship between the two.
Couple more questions, and there is an end to where I'm going. It was mentioned by Mr. Bassinger that it was a comprehensive zoning plan, and that was mentioned also when we talked about the comprehensive plan two years ago when we first adopted it. Was any zoning changed when we approved the comprehensive plan?
No.
Okay. So it's not a zoning ordinance, and we discussed that before. It doesn't change zoning. Another question. Some properties were included in the discussion and others were not, specifically 105 Barnett Boulevard, commonly known as the Buddhist Temple. That was not covered in Opportunity Zone 3. Why?
At that time, we knew the ownership of that property, their intent was to build a temple on that property, so it was not considered.
Okay. But it was zoned SF-40, and there's nothing on that property today, other than, we did approve a year ago a building plan, but at the time the comprehensive plan went through, there was nothing on the books, other than they were chatting with us. Correct?
Places of worship can go in any zoning area.
No, but I'm just saying, if they were not to build, it would still be an SF-40 property.
Correct.
If they sold it tomorrow, it's an SF-40 property. And then we'd be right there with something that was not in the comprehensive plan. Correct? Okay? So it comes back to, you know, a statement was made that, you know, the property was put under contract in August of 2021, four months before we did a comprehensive plan. It was 18 months from that point until we had a comprehensive plan enacted, and under that time, Lot 102 was in the plan for study, and then it was taken out in August of 2022. Why was it taken out?
If you, some of you all were on council at that time, and Mr. Broadway had at that time wanted to build the townhomes. Because we had just started the comprehensive plan process, I'd encouraged him to wait until we finished the process. However, being a developer, he wanted to move forward. So we did have a work session with, a joint work session with Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to listen to the proposed townhomes. We had already had the one open house meeting where we got input on all the various opportunity areas, but because Mr. Broadway made application in March of 2022, we thought it would be best to not go ahead and consider 102 Barnett in the comprehensive plan. So at that point, it was not considered in the discussions.
Well, I think exactly in February of 2022, we had a joint planning and zoning meeting where a concept plan was presented for 60 townhomes. Okay? So that was well along the way. It was under contract. Okay? So it was taken out because there was already something planned. Same reason that 105.
He had made a submission, so we thought it would be best, in terms of an act of application.
Okay. And the same reason Barnett was not, I mean, 105 Barnett was not considered because we were talking to the temple. Okay? But again, both of those pieces of property, sizable pieces of properties, should those plans fall through, then they would be SF-40.
Correct.
And that's why we did it. I know there's confusion on the comprehensive plan, okay? And we went through it. There was a presentation on August 30th through Joint Planning and Zoning Meeting, where it was specifically, everything was removed in Opportunity Zone 3, except the 2-point, or the 1.72 acres. And that was presented, okay? The fact that it is in that article, artifact of a PowerPoint presentation that was in the RFQ of April of 2021, that says, here's some properties that are vacant, okay? That artifact carried forward, and the artifact was not removed. So I understand there might be numerous references. In fact, Ms. Tentley, in her letter, said, yep, yep, there are references, okay? But when you get down to it, it was removed, and it's too bad that the artifacts were not removed. The inset maps is what I'm talking about, the artifact. So all I'm saying right there is there's confusion on it, but in the actual documentation, the written description of Opportunity Area 3, it's 1.72 acres, which today is the Village Division Center Commercial. Okay? So there is confusion, but it was cleared up when it was voted on, okay? The language was clear. Every, every time it was mentioned, you know, in the 500 pages or whatever, you know, we'll do a better job next time making those artifacts out of the document. But that's what I wanted to cover. I mean, there's a confusion, but it was explicitly removed. And in fact, members of council asked questions about at the time why it was removed. Members of the public asked why it was removed. So it was noticed at the time that it was removed, and we have documentation of that where it was requested, and asked and answered. So trying to clear up Opportunity Zone 3. Okay?
Okay.
Relinquish the floor.
Okay. Counsel, does anyone else have any questions?
I do. Process.
Well, can we, can we, wait, can we do, yeah.
Sorry, I was late to the light. I had to find it.
Robert Furston and Rhonda.
Quick question, Mr. Stevens. I wrote it down here. So the $500,000 price tag includes the parks plan, the trails plan, and the comprehensive plan? Is that correct?
As well as the FM 407 corridor study.
Okay. So we will use those plans to request grants, matching funds on future projects that we would otherwise be unable to request without those plans?
That is correct. If you don't have certain plans, particularly for Texas Parks and Recreation, Texas Parks and Wildlife Grants, even some of the Texas Dock Grants, if you don't have a planning document spelling those things out, you would not be eligible for the grants.
So would it be fair to say that over the life of the plan, let's just say 10 years, that we could expect to receive $500,000 in matching funds that we would have otherwise been unable to receive without these plans?
We have already received some of those funds because of the plan, for the boat dock plan and one other one, Phil?
Well, the pilot and old cabins.
Actually, for the cabins, thank you. It's included in that plan. So we've already received some.
So those grants have in fact paid for the cost of the plan at this point.
Not sure what those full amounts are, but it's gonna be pretty close to that.
Pretty close to it on year one, let's say, and let's extrapolate that over a couple more years, and it pays itself back, right?
We would certainly hope so with some of the trail plans, that we could get a lot more in funding.
Okay. Thank you. And then one other quick question, so I can do some math. What does the city realize in sales tax that gets paid to the city on a dollar spent within the city? What percentage of a dollar do we see in sales tax?
So the whole collection here is 8.25%. The city, well, excuse me, the state, they get 6%. We get 1 cent that goes to the general fund. DCTA gets a half cent, and then we have the half cent for these sales tax.
So 1 cent of $1, so 1%.
Yes.
Okay. So if the applicant quoted a figure, a conservative estimate of $69,000 of tax benefit directly paid to the city on these 24 single-family homes at a value of about 13 and 1/2 million, roughly, right? I'm not gonna do the math in my head, and certainly not in front of 100 people, but how much sales would a commercial establishment have to do to cover that same amount in tax revenue paid to the city through sales tax?
And I'm not sure if I could answer that on the spot, and I'll, I'll put the.
Is it two zeros on top of 68?
The finance director on the spot, to see what he could.
Where's your finance director?
He's back there. Is it 6 and 1/2 million in revenue that we would have to sell at a commercial establishment?
68,000? 6.9 million?
Because that's a lot of Whataburgers. If we could even get one there, so.
That includes school tax.
69 million?
There's also contributions to schools.
So 69 million in sales?
Yeah. Okay. So, thank you.
I'll yield my time for now.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Hearst, I'm sorry. Councilman Hearst?
Yes. So what process does the applicant ask for a variation to the dead-end streets and the variation to the transportation code?
Let me address that transportation code question real quick, because what you're citing is a parking regulation. What you're, is a violation of the state parking regulation with sites, and it's actually 455 302, not 453 302. I mean, you may have said 45, if I misheard you, I apologize. But it does prohibit vehicles from parking on sidewalks. So what, so there's no violation of variance from 545 302, the transportation code, the way you're stating it. What it is, is there is the possibility that if you have extra-long vehicles, like a, you know, 350, you know, F-350, you know, long bed, like my son-in-law owns, he parks it in his zero-lotline townhome, you know, you know, zero-lotline, you know, home at his location where he lives, yeah, it's gonna stick out over the sidewalk. My daughter's Tahoe, on the other hand, you know, fits, fits fine. It just kinda depends, so what it is, is a parking regulation that would result in somebody getting a ticket for parking their vehicle on the sidewalk. It's not a planning regulation that has to be complied with as such as the way, the way you've stated it. So does, may it, you know, shorter driveways make it more difficult for longer vehicles to park in them without extending over the sidewalk and possibly getting a ticket? The answer is yes. Does it constitute a planning criteria, though, for purposes of zoning? No, it does not.
Correct. That was my point. It's the transportation code. There's a reason why we have 20-foot allocated for the length of a vehicle. And that's, that was my point. There isn't a variance.
Understood. No, I agree. No, I don't disagree with that.
So when do we ask for variances to not have dead-end streets, since that's in our development code?
In our code, in Section 3.1 Streets, under Item O, cul-de-sac streets shall not be longer than 600 feet, closed at the end, and have a turnaround. It also, later on in the paragraph, says, dead-end streets are not allowed, in no case, if they are, in no case shall be more than 250 feet in length. Asking for variances is part of a PD.
So now would be the time to ask for that.
Wait, wait, wait. Well, none of the, the two lengths that you're referring to, I assume, are not 250 feet.
But it says, dead-end streets are not allowed if they, if you have them, so it's not allowed unless you're providing access to adjacent land, and in no case shall be more than 250 feet. There's two dead-end streets. And our design standards show exactly what you do when you have a dead-end street. You put a cul-de-sac. It's in the standard details. So again, when do we ask for this variance?
Councilman Woman Hearst, if you wanted to add a variance to that form, then you need to ask them.
So if they don't add that, then this land plan, can it be built?
The, what you're calling a dead-end street on the north side does provide access to the adjacent LASD property, if they so choose to provide a connection to it sometime in the future, you know? That's LASD's prerogative. The street to the south that dead ends does abut to the Ramon Oaks Phase 2, which has a fire lane on its perimeter, which could be connected, which could be also designated as a connection.
I understand that for future development, but from everything I've read and be presented, they've not had those conversations, so they're dead-end streets.
Okay. I provided you.
I know. What I'm getting at is, there's a lot more things than just the street right-of-way width that we're discussing. And then are we going to enforce our visual clearance clips on this project?
There is no design plans for this project yet. There's a zoning request change and a concept plan.
Correct. I'm just asking, are we going to, just looking at these thing to see if it, will they be enforced per the code, Illustration 17A?
Sure. When preliminary plat, final plat come to council, at the same time, staff will be reviewing civil construction plans, and yes, all that site plans, corners will be under review.
And lastly, we know there's been some water pressure issues, how they lay or whatnot. What assurances do you give the residents that there won't be any adverse impacts from these residential development without a water study?
That's a good question. The city did perform a water system pressure study in 2004 that would carry the city's water distribution system through the build-out. In staff's opinion, build-out. build-out basically happened in 2018 to 2020 period. We have transitioned into a maintenance mode and a rebuild mode. In that study, projects were, prior to the study, projects were designed and constructed, and then the study happened. This, the water distribution system was modeled. The city's on a single-pressure plane, so you had to be careful with water pressures because Tartan Trail 407 is the highest point in the city. I believe Edgewood or Copper's Branch Court might be the lowest point in the city. So you have a fine balance to meeting TCEQ mandates for a minimum 20 PSI water pressure during firefighting experience in the high-side elevation and not hitting over 110 to 115 PSI in the lower section elevations of the city. So, that being said, yes, the study's been done. There's been projects installed prior to this study and the model. There's been projects performed after the study and the model to address any pressure issues in the highest elevation of the city.
Have these 20, I mean, if there's already a model, and, and we do know, the residents have said, so wouldn't it be prudent to see what these 25 residences would do if there's any adverse impact? So prior to acceptance of the subdivision, if there is, the developer makes any mitigations?
I can bring forward another task order to, to model the system with current software, but you're looking at about $100,000 for it.
Wouldn't that be the, so, okay, so say this happens, and there's adverse impacts. It's a developer's responsibility. So who's on the hook to pay for those? We are, correct?
According to the model, there would not be adverse impacts.
But you said it hadn't been modeled.
I said it was modeled in 2004.
That was 20 years ago.
To build-out. That's how typically you model your systems for municipalities to construct infrastructure for build-out.
Correct.
So we did our study in 2004. Our build-out happened roughly around 2018, and we've been in, in transition to maintenance mode and rebuild mode since...
Has that model been updated since 2008, 2004 to show? I understand there's a model, but you have to validate your model once you put all this stuff in. Has, so no update to the model has been done in 20 years?
Yes, ma'am. We can validate it, but I will have to bring forward another project and to model the city's current distribution system is going to be about $100,000.
So if there's adverse impacts, we're just on the hook to fix them, is what you're saying?
I'm not saying there's adverse impacts.
We don't know.
The model that we did in 2004 does not show adverse impacts. It, it, it shows what the city was, should construct for final build-out. Now, you build a water distribution system, in fact, you build a water system in general with redundancy for your highest peak day. So our highest peak day is considered the hottest day of the summer with our largest building on fire and fire apparatuses pulling water out of the system to fight that fire. That is how you design a water system.
I understand. I just, usually cities will update their models every five years, like you do your plans, and if, if it all worked well, then we wouldn't have pressure issues. That's all I'm trying to say, is if, I don't want to be on the hook for another whatever if there's problems. That's all. So just bringing it to your attention that once the builder's gone, and if there's an issue, I guess we get to pay for it.
We'll keep that in, we'll keep that into consideration, but however, none of our data shows any kind of an issue in the area.
Okay. I think... And then, do you have any issue, is there any safety concern when you move? Our side yards typically, it's moved five foot closer, and we have side yards for visibility for motorists and pedestrians. Do you see any safety concerns when the buildings move 10, or five foot closer? Or in this case, I think 10 feet closer?
I'm not sure I understand.
So on the side yard, it's 15-foot side yards that is measured from the edge of right-of-way, which is typically a foot behind the sidewalk. In this plan, our home is 10 feet closer, so it's only 15 feet from the street. So we're moving it, we're moving it closer, the side yard. Would that have impact on the visibility between motorists and pedestrians? That's typically why you have a side yard of 15 feet measured from the sidewalk. And, and we're measuring, all of our measurements are from inside the road. And so a lot of these measurements are there for safety reasons, for pedestrians and our motorists. And so I'm asking, when we move things closer by 10 feet, what are the impacts?
Right.
Especially a building that's tall.
Even in, in your exhibit that you submitted to everybody, it shows a 25-foot distance from this, the back of curb to the structure, so I'm not quite sure I understand.
On the side, well, that's the front yard. I didn't do the side yard. So 25 feet, you're correct, and the side yard's shorter. It's closer. I'm just asking, that's why we have side yards for the safety of motorists and pedestrians.
We'll have to look at it and get back to you on that.
Okay. Again, it's because we're asking for things that we've not approved before ever, from what I can tell in the last 30 years, on all the plots I've pulled and I looked at, that's why I'm just asking. This is a, I mean, section, no case, more than 40 feet. Again, we have rules and regulations for a reason, and it would just be helpful if we followed them, especially when it comes to safety and design standards that have been tried and true practices for over a long period of time.
Right. I can, I can cite an example of something similar. It's actually less space that we have allowed to be constructed within the last five to eight years. It'd be the Ladera subdivision.
That's a different animal. That's a condo.
They're six foot apart. Those structures are six foot apart.
Correct. But that's a different animal. That is a condo association, and it's not a residential, it's, it's a different animal. So that's apples and oranges.
Okay.
And it's more of the public...
We'll get you an answer as soon as we can, ma'am.
Okay. Are you, Ron, are you done? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to know when we ask variances and when we ask if things, they're asking exceptions, it would be nice to, to have them all listed instead of just one when there's multiple.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Regarding the right-of-way, 30-foot concrete street, specifically where the north and south streets dead-end, for fire equipment, what does the fire department present any issues with any of the streets within theirs, but especially those two, two pieces with the, with the 30-foot right-of-way or the 30-foot concrete streets, and if there are cars on either side or both sides, and their access points?
Right. A 30-foot face-to-face concrete street is our standard development for a street.
Throughout the city?
Throughout the city.
Okay. I know I went out, and my closest reference point is the one that's right in front of my house, and that's about 28 feet, and that's...
You're also in a PD that approved that.
Yes, and that's asphalt. That grass is grown up, so I don't really know where the actual line is. But where are the utility easements on that? There's no sidewalks, but presumably the sidewalk would be where I currently mow.
Right. I'm not sure the name of your subdivision, but there are many, actually, most of Highland Shores subdivisions are 40-foot right-of-ways with less than typical design streets. The first half of Highland Shores are, is a rural drainage development, and then the second half of Highland Shores is urban drainage development. Most of Highland Shores was not designed with sidewalks. There, there are some, and it's a, it's all Highland Shores is, is PDs.
Right.
So in those PDs, they asked for all these variances for non-typical construction, and past councils and planning and zoning commissions approved them, and, and they got constructed.
Okay. We've covered, I think, most of the other things. We've already discussed the water pressure, fire services, the right-of-way. I did have one additional question for, and I know she said that the condo association that was prepared for Ladera is a different, different breed than what we're looking at here, PD. But what is the right-of-way in Ladera?
There is no right-of-way in Ladera. It's a, it's a 29-foot easement roadway. I'm in, it's a 29-foot private road with a 24-foot fire lane.
Okay.
Isn't the pavement width, the curb-to-curb is 29?
29.
29, okay. I think the last question I had was directed to the consultant in her presentation, and that was, you talked about single-family homes in one breath, and then later referred to them as patio homes. What is your distinction between the two? Other than just category, because when you look at this development...
Yeah.
A single-family home is a structure that sits on a lot, not attached to any other property, which is what this is, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But even a townhome who's attached can be a single-family home.
Correct.
It's just attached. It has its own individual property line.
Right.
So with all that being aside, what makes this a patio home is you have a, what they kind of call like a zero side, where you have, you know, less penetrations on that side, a lesser setback, but then the other home next to it has a, has a wider setback. So you still have a 10-foot building separation, which is very typical in single-family neighborhoods. That is kind of the standard for fire protection, and so we've designated that here. What makes it a patio home typically is they focus on more of like a side yard with a side patio, and that's why your setbacks are like one foot for one and then nine foot for the other, but to collect...
To maximize the patio side.
Maximize the patio. In this instance, we are able to do side yards and backyards to give the residents, just as a bonus, but that's really the definition of a quote-unquote patio home. It's just where your lot lines are, but you still get that 10-foot separation. It's just to maximize a side yard for each individual home, because you might not have the depth to have a rear backyard. That's the difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. On this end, do we have any questions?
You gotta turn on your light.
Let me pull this up a little bit. All right, so, and I hate to go back to the comp plan, but just in reference of what you were saying, when we had the open house, I believe it was February 23rd of 2022, the residents of Highland Village were presented with all 13 acres of Opportunity Area 3, which was 102. It was the temple, and it was the two lots behind. So when our residents were engaged, they were looking at it holistically. They were looking at all 13 acres. So yes, something might have been taken out later on, but on page 252 of the current plan, document page 252, because I don't know if it, the numbering goes to 252. It actually indicates 13 acres as part of Opportunity Area 3. So that's what our residents had in mind when they were looking at Opportunity Area 3, and they were looking at the different potential uses for Opportunity Area 3. Going to, and this might be for the developers, the garages themselves, what are the dimensions of the garages? How deep are they? Because I didn't see that on the floor plans. I saw the dimensions of every, every room except for the garage.
The garages on the smaller homes that back up to the west are 20-foot in length, and then on the bigger ones, it goes up to about 22.
Okay.
I may not be exactly right on that, but I'm pretty close.
Okay. So you could fit a Silverado 1500 in there?
Yes, sir. You can.
All right. So the driveway is with a 25-foot setback, and this is where we're going, because I don't, I don't drive a 350, which I did. I drive a 1500, which is 19 feet long. With a 25-foot setback, three foot of parkway, five foot of sidewalk, in essence, anybody that drives a light-duty pickup will be blocking the sidewalk if they park in the driveway of every single home.
So yeah, if that's, yes, the answer would be yes. It's about 16-foot, probably a little bit more than that, from the back of the garage door to the start of the sidewalk. I would say 16 and 1/2, probably something like that. But the answer to your question is yes, if it's a four-door pickup.
Right. Okay. Next question is, the sidewalk going north, because we talk about a lot of, you know, families and children, and the fact that it's near a school. The sidewalk going north on Barnet ends before it gets to the school, right? And then there's dirt, and there's grass. If families and children are going to be walking to the school from this development, has there been any discussion with LISD of finishing out the sidewalk, doing any type of markers, because essentially the kids are going to have to be going through the parking lot? And currently, when kids are dropped off, the buses drop off on the south side, the cars drop off on the east side.
I have had discussion with the elementary school, not LISD in general, but the question was, if kids walk to the north, to the school, how can we assure their safety?
Yep.
And the answer was that a guard or a teacher would be put out there as a crosswalk person to help them, or either they could go around to their left and come back around without having to cross the sidewalk, is what I was told.
Okay. So we had 550,000 starting. What's the high end on the 3200 square foot?
The highest on, it would probably be about 750, 730, something like that.
Okay. And currently, we have 36 homes for sale in Highland Village. That range anywhere from 420 to, I want to say 1.4 million was the highest one. And that's not including the lots for sale, so this is kind of in the middle of that. Okay. Yeah, I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Good.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up to your question about the price, please, Mr. Broadway? You asked him that, what the starting price was, and you said 550, right?
They had indicated 550 during the presentation as the starting price. I wanted to know what the most expensive, what is the range?
But I thought that 550 was an average, and that's where I'm going. I want to get a clarification, because the previous presentations they made, the starting price was around 450. So I want to get a clarification to your point.
Okay.
Brian, can you, on the starting point on the smaller ones, we had previously said 450, now we're saying 550?
Yeah.
550 is, would be the starting point on the smaller one?
Yeah, we range anywhere from 450 to about 525.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we started at around 475, up to about 550 was what we're actually gauging for. Obviously, the more homes we could put on there, the less we could actually bring down that price, but the way that it is currently constructed was yes. And right now, there's 34 homes that are in the market right now in Highland Village. The lowest one is just under 500,000, the most expensive being, so the average home right now in Highland Village is well above what we are actually starting at.
With more land and more square footage.
It's also about 25 years, it's also 25 years newer.
Right. But they also have more land and more square footage. Quick question, with regards to, sorry, were you?
No, that, he clarified it. Thank you.
Yeah. With regards to the development itself, what is the timeframe between when you break ground and when you finish that 25th home? And basically, what I'm looking at is, how long can the people go into the school, go into the businesses? Can they expect construction to be happening in that area?
I've got a schedule put together that shows about 18 months from time to break ground to time to finish.
Okay, thank you.
How many, excuse me, how many phases with that?
Currently, there's three. I've got it currently as three phases. However, if pre-sales come in, then that three could go to two or go to one. And I could also add that I have had a couple people reach out to me wanting to put their name on a list, if I had one. name on a list, if I had one, one being a Highland Village resident that wanted to downsize, that's lived here for a while, the other not.
So can I just clarify, I'm sorry, just because I want to make sure, so you're saying 18 months from breaking ground until the 25th house is finished, but you're doing it in three phases?
That's what I've got calculated as far as the schedule is concerned, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Kevin? Oh, I'm sorry, are you finished? Are you, okay.
Just a few. I think a lot of my questions have been asked and answered already. In regards to the speed limit, school zone on 407, I know the traffic study was done a while ago, but who is, I guess, adding 25 homes even though they're going north, assuming that school-aged children consume even 20% of it? The people coming out, that speed limit during school zone or school hours is still 35 miles an hour, I think, I believe?
Thirty.
Thirty? What's the, what's the process of lowering that if this does go through, making it easier for people coming in and out? To me, 30 miles an hour, it's still in that school zone, adding kids, adding more people in and out of that area, and this could be with the houses or with a new development, whatever it is, you're bringing more cars in and out during those hours. Who would, I guess, would it be a deal between the city and the state, or would it just be Tech Dot all the way deciding the school zone?
It would be Tech Dot all the way. It's a Tech Dot Road and Tech Dot maintains signal. The city has an ordinance, a no-left-turn ordinance during peak hours on Barnett.
So we could put in, is there a request for a speed limit change still dictated off that 10,000 additional cars, or is it just based on a request?
There's been no request yet.
Yeah.
If you desire the staff to make a request, we can, you know, after the plating phase and the construction phase starts, we can make that request.
Yeah, I didn't know, and I was curious on that one. Let's see. To follow up on Councilman Nelson's question about the north-side sidewalk going, so there was discussions, obviously, extending the sidewalk onto the school property and finishing off with a handicap ramp, I assume, on that as well?
You know, I have a private property. I haven't had that discussion. I'll take that sidewalk all the way to the end of the property that I have, and if the LISD needs me to extend it and connect to theirs, then no problem.
An extra 50 square feet, right?
Yeah, it's not much.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. My next question is HOA. I don't think it's been discussed, and I'm not, I'm an old side of Highland Village resident, so I'm fortunate or unfortunate enough to not live in an HOA, but in regards to rental properties, because I know it's going to be a big discussion in regards to HOA, rental properties and, I would assume, is cars on the street, can that be part of an HOA ordinance that is agreed upon by the HOA and the city?
Basically, no. If the city wants to create additional parking regulations itself, that can be enforced. You know, we'll have to adopt no parking ordinance to address it, since that will be a public street. With respect, now, if the HOA elects to, you know, enforce its own parking regulations with, through its residents, it's, you know, I'll tell you, I'll just tell you, because I hear this all the time, you know, you got 25 owners running an HOA, it doesn't generate, unless you're charging an exorbitant amount for dues, you're not going to generate a lot of money for, you know, to hire an association, you know, manager, which typically what happens, to pay them to manage something that frankly doesn't have that much in the way of common areas. You know, about the only thing, developer may correct if I'm wrong, but the only thing that might be maintained would be the entry sign area and some of the landscaping would be on that. There's not much in this development that an HOA would typically be required to address. You know, the issue with respect to rentals, particularly if you talk about short-term rentals, again, that's, you know, we're generally not in a position, a city, to legally enforce, you know, or prohibit the rental of properties, but the HOA, of course, can do so, or just restrict a covenants that the property owners enforce against each other could do so with respect to, you know, defining what constitutes an allowable lease term within their covenants, and there's some, you know, state case law on that. So that's something that could be considered, but as a general premise, cities are not, you know, don't get into establishing and enforcing those types of restrictions in private covenants, which is what you'd be suggesting.
Can I ask, on that, could they also include in the covenants that only 10% of the properties could be rental properties?
I think that, could they? Honestly, I don't know the answer to that question, but I will tell you, that's going to be generally pretty typical to enforce.
Yeah.
You know?
I was just curious. I was thinking, I mean, you know, because if you can, you can't restrict the parking, but can you restrict, and if the parking concern is based on rental properties, can you restrict the rental properties?
Well, I guess the question is, of course, there's an assumption there that's being made, that renters have more vehicles than homeowners, you know, owner residents, and that, I can tell you that, living in both kinds of areas, that's not typically true.
Two more things for me, I think, just as a reference, the tax rate and the projection for the tax rate, I think it was already discussed, but I believe it's on the low end, so just for reference, you didn't include any fees, you didn't include any permits, anything like that, so however it goes, I would say next time, maybe up those numbers a little bit, just because it's not showing the whole story of what would come with that. And the other thing is to, however it goes, the letter that we got from a person who was proposed from this development two or three times, to come back and switch that up, like I said, however it goes, I think it's a testament to you ongoing and communicating with the residents, whether it be, whether they oppose it, whether they are for it. It's something that's been lacking a little bit in other proposals and throughout the city for the last couple of years, I think. So it's nice to see someone connecting. Like I said, whether it goes for you or against you, just know that it's good to see people change from one direction to another, not just, and everyone's completely, you know, it's on them, on their opinions, but just good job on working your way through that.
So before, I'm gonna, I would just like to say something.
Really?
Yeah, I know. Most of my questions have all been answered by, because of the questions that have been asked up here, and they've been very good questions. I would like to follow up on the rental. And I don't remember which councilman brought that up, but, and I understand it's not something that the city can put into an ordinance or that we can dictate, but it can be put in to an HOA, and I'm asking any of the three of you, it doesn't matter, because I've had dealings where HOAs have said that for the first two years, there can't be any rentals, or only 10% or 20% of the homes can be rented. So is that something that you are willing to do into the HOA documents?
I think here, I mean, I think as any Texas, we can appreciate, you know, our, kind of, our homeownership laws. You know, if I bought one of these homes and then get transferred through a company to go live in Europe, but I know I'm going to be back in three years, I may not want to sell my home, right, because I've locked in a great interest rate or whatnot, and so I want to lease my home. You know, I have the right to do that. I don't think it's unreasonable, typically, Texas state leases, even for multifamily and other uses, a short-term lease is kind of limited to six months is kind of the starting point, and so I think it's reasonable to say we would not accept any other leases that are less than six months. That would be the minimum, so that you're not having a transient population, you're not getting a short-term rental situation. Highland Village is a little different than maybe another city like Arlington that has a lot of entertainment district and football games and things like that, where people are coming in and staying for a weekend and then leaving again. I don't think we have that situation here, and so I feel like six months at a minimum lease will kind of help that. It is such a small subdivision, I'm hesitant to want to put a percentage on that, so that if you have like, you know, two homes and they're already leased, and then they're like, oh, okay, well, now I can't lease my home because my neighbors already are, so I think that's kind of hard to manage in terms of, like he said, a small HOA, but I think it's reasonable to kind of stick with your typical Texas standard lease and real estate documents, which is six months minimum.
And I appreciate that, I do, but I do know that that's been a concern that has been brought forward by many of our residents, that they don't want this to turn into a rental subdivision.
Sure.
And we all know that those subdivisions are out there.
Yeah, so hearing that, I would suggest that, you know, this whole entire community cannot just be owned by one owner, or maybe even have some language, and I'm proposing language here for the HOA, which would not really go into effect until you're ready to have your first resident.
Right.
I think some other language that would be reasonable would say, hey, like, a single ownership entity can't own more than two homes. If I wanted to come in here and buy two homes, one for me, one for my parents, because I want grandma and grandpa next door, I don't think that's unreasonable either, so I think there's some other language that's limiting, where you're not going to get maybe a completely rental community that you're alluding to. There's ways to slice that and dice that and protect.
But you're open to that. I mean, the developer is open to have no discussions with the residents.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this developer has been willing to do whatever it takes and has worked effortlessly.
Councilman Cox's comment, absolutely. I do believe that he has gone over and above to reach out to the residents, and so, and I appreciate that tremendously, so I just, you know, I want to make sure.
Yeah, I think that there's ways to around that.
And we may not have at this, a short-term rental ordinance, but I know Councilman Hurst has asked for us to look at that, so, well, we will, so we will. So there was a comment, and this is not to you, this is just, I'm trying to see if I've got any other comments, but everybody took care of all of those. Somebody made a comment to our look and feel. We had a look and feel at one time. Thank you to the state of Texas, they did away, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but they did away with our look and feel. We can't now, can't tell anybody what to build it out of.
Yeah, we can't tell them what they can build it out of. We can somewhat tell them what it can look like or must look like, you know, from an architectural standpoint, as far as, you know, finetration, gable-ing, those kinds of things. But when it comes down, and so typically, when we draft ordinances that have elevations in them, you know, my language has now changed to say it must be built like with X number, percentage of brick and, you know, brace through your other brick, whatever, to it must look like, you know, substantially look like, or generally look like the elevation's attached here, too. So if they can make it look like cardboard, and cardboard complies with code, you know, the building codes, and they can make it look like brick with cardboard, they can build it as long as the building codes allow for it.
Okay. I just, I wanted that to be clarified, because they kind of tied our hands on that one. Safety is always important to me, and I know we beat this, kind of beat this dead horse, but I just want to make sure, chiefs, chiefs back there, that y'all have reviewed these and you're feel, you're comfortable with the safety. There were, we're a house fire at the back, that we could get fire trucks back there and put that out without an issue, or an ambulance, if there was an ambulance call. You're.
So my predecessor, Chief Collier.
You're gonna have to come to the microphone, because Laurie's stepped out of her office.
So our previous chief had looked at it and gave his recommendations, and based on his recommendations and his qualifications that he had, that he wore many hats, being fire marshal, so whatever his recommendations were is what we're going to stand behind and follow.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure. All right. I'm, Councilman Hurst, your light is on.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So for the school district, do we currently have crossing guards at the elementary school?
I can answer that. There's a crossing guard behind Parities Elementary as they're coming in from the back neighborhood. And talking to the school, almost no children currently walk down Barnett, they drive in. So any children went here, would be taking the new sidewalk, and they would do a study if there's a need because of those children, then they would put a crossing guard up front. But the current one is in behind the school.
Okay. So that's our expense, correct? We pay for crossing guards?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any more? Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any more questions, comments?
I think I'd like to make one comment towards the end. We've got three property owners on the back that see this as their best solution, okay? They would like to see it going forward. Understand, Mr. Bastenger, what you said, you know, a little pressure to, let's, you know, kind of put an end to this. But I also know that they're the ones that could be most impacted, right? We can talk traffic, you know, the traffic is 159 cars in a peak hour right now. That's what it is, okay? That's probably less than it was if the school population dropped a little bit. So I think we need to default and defer to those homeowners as we go forward. Another comment, too, is the residential on that street, Rambling Oaks is a residential. There's independent living and then there's skilled living, but that is people living there. They are residents on that side, so to say this is not complimentary is complimentary, okay? Across the street, there's a memory care center. That is residential, okay? There's people living there, okay? That's not what we would call standalone homes, but it's residential. So the high-traffic areas are down on the corner that's going in and out of Whataburger, okay, and then Village Vision and the dental office. Outside of that, there's no traffic, and so when you get on to, you know, the weekends, when you get on to Saturdays, it's very, very low. You get outside of the peak hours of rush hour, okay, it's 50 cars an hour, and that's in and out of Whataburger. That's not going up and down the street, and that's the Tech Dot study. That's not just making up a number, okay? And that's, they've been there forever. So again, I want to just say, let's listen to the people that are there that opposed it two years from running, and then if you said, okay, let's move forward, because they have the most impact, okay? That's all I want to say.
So I actually would like to say something, and I actually, I'm gonna read it, oh, I think, I was gonna say, because Tammy said she was gonna read hers, I'm gonna read mine, because I thought about it this afternoon and wrote something out, so please humor me, and do you have your, is your light on, because you want?
Oh, sorry.
No, I just want to make sure before I do this, I was gonna give you an opportunity. So first, I want to just say thank you to everybody that's here. As your elected representative, it is my duty to listen to your concerns, advocate for your needs, and make decisions that protect and enhance our community. I deeply value the voices of each and every one of you and understand how changes in our city can feel deeply personal, especially when they affect your neighborhood or your home. The issue before us is a complex one, and I know that there are differing opinions about what the best course of action is. On one hand, we must consider the broader needs of the city, how we continue to grow, develop, and thrive as a community. On the other hand, we have a responsibility to protect the interests of those who will be most directly affected by any decision made, particularly our residents who live closest to the property in question. Balancing these two priorities is not easy. My commitment to you is that I will continue to listen and take into account the concerns of those who stand to be most impacted. I understand that proximity to this property makes the stakes higher for you, and it is our obligation to ensure that your voices are heard and your quality of life is safeguarded. However, we must also recognize that as a city, we are interconnected. The decisions we make in one area ripple out across the entire community. Growth, development, and change are inevitable, but how we manage them defines our future. My responsibility extends to our entire city to make decisions that help our city flourish while preserving what makes it a great place to live. I am committed to working towards a solution that strikes the right balance. We must be forward-thinking, but we must also be respectful of our longstanding residents and their concerns. This is not an either-or situation, but one that requires careful thought, compromise, and collaboration. I ask for your trust as we move forward. I assure you that protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods while making decisions for. for the betterment of the entire city is at the forefront of my mind, and I can, I think I probably can speak for the entire council, that they, they feel the same. I'm not going to speak for them, I wrote this for me, but let's work together to find a path that benefits us all. So thank you, guys, for being here, for listening. I appreciate staff and the time that they have put into this. I appreciate each one of these council members. We are a team of seven that, that want the best for, for City of Highland Village, because we love this city, just like you do, like everyone here. So, and with that, if there's no other questions, no other comments, no other discussions?
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, can we add or suggest any additions or changes to what the language says?
Oh, I mean, I think that...
I mean, are we at that point now?
I would, are we at that point now?
I'm gonna suggest...
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest that we get a motion on the table and second it first, as far as what we're gonna do, and then, and then discuss any potential amendments to the ordinance at that, to the text at that point.
Okay. So listening to that, then we, I will entertain, well, first, let me just ask this, and, because it is, at this point, it is 10:07. Does anyone need a break? Just, is just a short five-minute break?
Let's get it done.
Counsel, anybody? Yes or no? Shake your head, yes or no? Okay, then, hearing none, we're gonna move on. I'll entertain a motion. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 24, 2024-1313, amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance, amending the regulations relating to the use and development of the 3.96 acre tract and land located on F Hyatt Survey, abstract 559, commonly known as 102 Barnett Boulevard from SF40, single-family residential planned development residential district for patio use, first of two reeds.
And...
Mr. Kixmiller, for point of clarification, we do have two ordinances in the packet. Are you presenting, are you proposing in your motion the version that P&amp;Z recommended, or the one with the developer and city attorney changes made after the P&amp;Z recommendation?
I, for clarification, I'm using the version the city attorney amended, including the eight-foot fence, and a couple of the minor modifications.
Okay.
The height modification.
Height modifications, everything, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So is that motion clear?
Is that motion clear?
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Feaster?
I will second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now, follow-up now.
Do you recognize anybody?
For purposes of amendments.
Councilman Hurst for...
Yes, I would like to add the amendment that the garage face be 20 feet from the sidewalk.
Hang on, we gotta write these down.
Can you second that?
Oh.
Unless, unless the...
I don't think she's finished. Are you gonna do them all in one, or do you want to do them separately? Do we do all, like, she would like to add?
How many are we gonna have?
Two.
Oh, okay.
Two. Okay. Well, it might be, you know, it might be easier to do one at a time, only because, you know, everybody might like, some might like one, some might like both, some might like the other, you know?
Okay. So we have...
So in order to be in compliance with the Texas Transportation Code and not block sidewalks, the garage face be 20 feet from the edge of the sidewalk.
Okay. So that's an amendment, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Councilman Cox, Cox seconded. Okay, and then your next one? Oh, I'm sorry.
My suggestion is you go ahead and discuss that amendment, that proposed amendment.
Okay.
Then take a vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, the main motion will be amended to include that. If the motion fails, amendment is not approved.
Okay, so we're gonna, okay, so we're gonna vote on this to see if we, okay, so, well, I kind of thought we had, that had been discussed at nauseam, but we'll discuss it. Counsel, does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, I need to ask Scott Kristin.
The developer? Okay. Oh, Scott?
What does that mean? Because I know that there's a chance of moving a sidewalk out to the edge of the pavement, right?
What does 25-foot mean?
You can achieve that multiple ways. You can relocate the sidewalk closer to the curb. You can remove the sidewalk on one side of the property, the residential side, and leave the sidewalk on the, on the eastern side.
Hey, can you say that again? You can, you can...
I was talking about the, the north-south street, I can't read the name of it, the purple and green western homes. You know, you could shift the sidewalk to the curb and gain so many feet, I don't have the measurements in front of me, you can eliminate that sidewalk if you so choose. Still keep the sidewalk on the side lots where the northern and southern home is blue and the, and the two centers are gold, and still achieve your sidewalk in the northbound, southbound. You can eliminate the sidewalk on one side of the, of the, the two streets that are, that are coming off of Barnett and, and shift your lots, you know, a couple of feet north, south, whatever it takes. There's ways to do it, but that would be done at plating and civil.
And then just one other question. The suggestion for the 25 feet, that's for parking regulation as opposed to anything else?
I'm sorry, make sure I understood, because I wrote down 20 feet.
20 feet from the edge of the sidewalk to the garage door.
So 20 feet, okay.
Yes, it's 20 feet from...
I just want to make sure Mr. Kixmiller understood, that you said 20, not 25.
20 feet.
All right, so it's 20.
From the edge of the sidewalk to the garage door.
Then I'll ask, is that doable if you move the sidewalk?
Can the sidewalk be moved or deleted? Right now, I think...
That's a negotiation between you.
Yeah, neither. How much do you gain if you move it to the back of the curb?
Four feet? It looks like.
Should be four feet. Put you right at 20.
When I look at it, Highland Shores has no sidewalks, okay? Old Highland Village has no sidewalks.
But they've also got very large lots. Here, you're gonna have, you're gonna have kids that are gonna have to go around vehicles. You cannot fit your vehicle in any of those driveways.
Oh.
It will not fit without hanging out over the sidewalk. So I think this is a very good example of something that would be beneficial to the families that are gonna live there.
So he's got a five-foot sidewalk proposed. It's 25 foot from the back curb. You can, so you got a 16-foot from the structure to the sidewalk as proposed. You can shrink the sidewalk to a four-foot, gain a foot, and you can move, you can move it three feet to the, closer to the road, and still have a one-foot grass median, and achieve your 20.
Okay. Achievable.
It's achievable.
Okay.
Anybody else have any question or comment on that? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're still on the same one. Never mind. I'm good. Sorry, it's late. I'm good.
Okay. Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, so we need to vote on this 20-foot from garage to sidewalk, if we're gonna include that in the motion for the other. So, have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, one, two, five to two.
I'm sorry?
Five, two, I think?
No.
No?
Okay, if we read your hand, just in favor of...
In favor of?
Okay. And then...
Opposed. Okay. Then it'll be included. What's the second one?
Require all permanent fencing, including along the western boundary, to be installed prior to issuance of any building permit for any residential home. So it's done at upfront, not piecemealed. So that all the perimeter screening, including the 10-foot or the western property line, be installed as part of the infrastructure prior to any building permit being approved.
May I ask the reason?
Yes, because you've got four property owners, and you've got eight, nine homes. So anytime they build a home, that will inconvenience, and people have pools and dogs and all, so anytime one of those homes goes up for, whatever, some of those lots have three of those homes backing them. So every time a home's built and a fence is put up, they have to deal with the coming down, the, all the, all of that. If you do it all at the same time, everybody's inconvenienced at the same time, and I think it's cleaner.
Just understand, okay?
Okay. So there's a motion? I mean, yes, there's a motion. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Who did the motion on that?
Councilman Hurst.
Hurst, okay.
And the second was Councilman Nelson.
Yep. For...
I'm sorry.
For clarification, I'll have a look here in just a second. Yeah, I'm just trying to look here where we've got it required right now. The construction screening fence is purpose, this section's 2C1. That's CEO, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what, you know, know what the changes are gonna be. Okay, I've got it. I've got it figured out. We're good.
Okay.
So will that be, for, just question, will that fence be done first? Like...
Well, it would be, I mean, based on my understanding of Councilman Hurst's motion, it would be done, the infrastructure, flatwork, streets, plumbing, you know, utilities would be going in, but before they could issue a building permit for the first patio home...
Is that true?
Those fences have got to be done.
Correct. I don't, I think it's reasonable, when you have three properties that back up to your one property, and if you have pools, then, you know, that's, that's danger, and dogs and kids. I think that's a reasonable request.
That's...
Just west?
Just, just the western screening fence, or all the...
All perimeter screening should be put in place. That's part of your infrastructure.
Is it?
I think upfront, you said it was on the west.
No.
First submission.
All perimeter fencing, including the western boundary, to be installed and screening walls, I mean, I would assume...
Because the northern perimeter is the school property, and the south perimeter is the street.
And you have a screening wall in front, so your screening wall's mandatory, correct? Or upfront, what do you have? Do you have screening? And isn't that, has to be installed anyway before building permit? Correct? Is that correct, Scott?
Right, the masonry screening wall, it is masonry, right?
That's on Barnett.
Along Barnett, frontage.
So your required screening is your western and your eastern property, correct? Because you're backing to the school and to commercial, that's not a required screening element, is it?
Right, no.
Okay, so it's the eastern and western fencing and screening.
Eastern and western.
Okay. Okay.
Kevin, do you have that? Do you have that correct? Okay. Is that, that's doable?
Eastern, western is doable, more than that would be difficult, just to get room to build the homes.
Right. But she, she said eastern, western.
That's not required screening.
Right, so it's eastern, western.
Per the code, it's just Barnett and the western.
Okay. Perfect. All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0.
I have one question.
Sure.
One more. So this is a time that if the developer wanted to request to allow dead ends, it would happen, correct?
Councilwoman Hurst, I don't believe we're in agreeance with your dead-end comment. We have, we are considering that, a hammerhead turnaround, the fire department is taking a look at it, their agreeable with, with the way it's set up. It's less than 250 feet, and we're planning to move forward with as-is.
Can we get a ruling from the city attorney on what a dead-end street is?
See, the definition is...
Well...
Not right off the top of my head, because I've been trying to find the darn definition and where you're citing, I can't find it in the code of ordinances, so I'm not sure which standard you were referencing.
It's subdivision design standard, section 3, 3.1, letter O.
I'm sorry, where?
Subdivision design standard, section 3, 3.1, streets, letter O.
Oh, okay, letter O. Okay, hang on a second. All right, I found it now.
Can I?
If you eliminate it...
You want that break?
You get it, you drive one.
Can I, can I ask, can I make a recommendation for a five-minute break while he's looking at that?
Let's look at that.
Give him a minute. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Okay.